Thank you for attending the meeting at the planning and journeying board meeting, March 23rd, 2022. I'd like to call or apply and present the flag.
Good evening and then, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the planning and journeying board meeting, March 23rd, 2022. Is it all now?
They shot them right forward.
Good evening. Good evening and then, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the planning and journeying board meeting, March 23rd, 2022. I'd like to call or apply and present the flag.
Good morning, United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice and law.
Thank you very much. Full notice that this meeting, pursuant to the public meeting act, has been by the clerk in the following hour. To the board of the board office and email of team director's back and attorney's office. And we'll call for a question.
Chair Rowan Green.
Yes.
Mr. Rorke.
Here.
Ms. Bush.
Here.
Ms. Stein.
Here.
Mr. Reddall.
Here.
Mr. Roseau.
Here.
Mayor is excused. Mr. Rehner is excused.
Uh, Bert.
Here.
Um, Ms. Rorke.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
Here.
Okay, first order of business we're going to do is we're going to seat Sharon for Ms. Farmer. Just for everyone's identification, the mayor and the council matic seat cannot be at this hearing because it is for a variance, so they had to conclude themselves. So to give the applicant a full quorum, we're seating Sharon to replace one of our regular members. She's not replacing the mayor for the council matic seat, okay? All right, thanks for this approval of minutes from the February 23rd meeting. Are there any questions or corrections on those minutes? They can accept, enter into motion to accept the minute, please. Ms. Bush, if there's an other call in favor, anyone vote? Old business, I don't think we have any old aware of. New business, we have an application for use and bulk variances, application 21 back to year 09 for D.R. Horton, block 4129, block 1. Uh, Mr. Rowland.
Yes, gentlemen, you ready, Eric?
We are. Yes.
And if any of you, ladies or gentlemen, are going to testify on behalf of the applicant, if they would rise, please do it here, as I can swear that man, as well as our, Mr. Buck. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, do you soundly swear that testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman, once again, so for the education of the public, this is a huge thing for a density application only.
Correct.
It's not a site plan or a, or a major subdivision, that's even.
That will be obligated.
It's focused just on the density, uh, density reports.
We're not going to be able to answer any questions or take any questions in regards to the site plan. Um, I have spoken to the applicants and they are willing to, after the meeting, go out in the hallway with the president and entertain any questions they may have in regard to the site plan portion of our application.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, my name is Eric Olson, I'm the attorney for the applicant, which is D.R. Horton, NJPA. Just to go through what you indicated, uh, and what Mr. Rowan and I discussed, we are aware and we have acknowledged numerous times that we will be back before this board on the site plan subdivisions that will exist in the future. So I'm sure members of the public will ask questions as to the flow of the property, the distinct look of the property. All of that will ultimately be back before the members of the board, but that's not what we're applying for tonight. Tonight, we're solely here for the density only. So when we're talking about our proofs and we go through all of the information supplied by our professionals and yours, we're going to be focusing on that issue only. And with all due respect to the board members of the public, I would simply ask that if anyone asks questions, of course, we'll answer them and we'll be responsive to everything that the board members want to go through. But we really want to kind of streamline that tonight to what we're here for because clearly we'll be back with other issues and stuff's going to come up on review letters and on submissions, but that has nothing to do, uh, with the density.
Correct.
Additionally, um, I'm sure everyone's aware, this application comes on the heels much later, 2014, of a very, very similar application that had been earned and granted by this board as well. I think, Madam Chairman, you were on the board at that time, yes, I'm not sure everybody else was, but it's substantially similar to that and we're going to focus on the issues, which are pretty much the same issues now as in your event, the election. Before getting into that, however, I did want to thank the board and I guess Ms. Pinto for being very responsive. We were in and we had the application scheduled, we had the renotice, we came back, we had to supply some information. Um, I've done this for 30 years, I've never had a board administrator as a tenant, so thank you. It was a pleasure to get everything in. Hopefully we continue to do that.
He's always good, he's always that good.
You were surprised and guilted and downed what we had to deal with sometimes, so perhaps some more cooperative in that regard, very helpful. Uh, with me tonight are representatives of the applicant, who are going to walk through each individual thing that we're looking for. Most importantly, we think that this site is, is in a very strong way suited for what the density we're trying to achieve. Uh, we're going to go and discuss why that is, but the most important thing is, I think, right now, it complies with your master plan. The D, the D variance, and I'm sure all the board members are aware of this, is different for the use versus density. So normally we have what's called the enhanced burden of proof. When we have a D, you have to show that it's overly suited for the type of development we're attempting to engage in. This D variance is for density only, so I'll certainly defer to your solicitor to discuss the burden. Ultimately, when matter goes into a vote, but when we talk about what we have to put on the record by way of proofs, we're talking density only, not used. So it's not quite the same standard. Having said that, I would like to get David.
No, I did, I did a group swearing, so we can be. Uh, can I, can I, what documents, we have a property survey, we can, I can pre-mark that as A1, if you don't object?
I don't, we can go through, I suppose.
And a traffic engineering assessment, we'll just mark that A2. Um, amended project narrative and variance, that was what you submitted with your application.
Correct.
Three, and drawings proposed townhouse project running track, uh, we'll mark that as A4.
And we also have, at the request of the board, submitted prior de restrictions that had been filed. They're of record in Camden County, that's the Runnymede Track.
Well, we'll mark that A5.
That came along with our last.
Okay, previously filed de restrictions, an easy one, isn't there an easy one?
Correct, so we've got the, um, uh, D book, 2913, page 123, and that's something the board can take additional notice of because it's of record.
It's of record.
Additionally, I know that the board members have received Mr. Fox's letter, we've gone through the letter, we concur with his findings and recommendations, thank you. So to the extent we need to go through, um, clarifying, we don't need to put any testimony out for the board members to hear from them regarding the zoning requirements. We're here, when we talk about, uh, D R three district, that the only variance tonight is the, uh, the D for the density, but all of the rest are default standards, we concur with Mr. Buck, so in that regard, if you want to further this, David will find that happening. He also had indicated correctly the standard for the D and we walked through, uh, the parking. I know that the board had a couple of questions David and I discussed regarding a non-conversion agreement for the garage. Yeah, that's something we concur with as well, so we get to discuss whether that's going to be a legal parking space and has a spot for trash or whatever else you put in the garage. The garages, at least from our perspective, cannot be converted to anything but a garage. Are we going to go around and knock on doors and look in windows, you know, if we have suspicion someone's doing something wrong, we could, but that's really the only mechanism at that point, once we file another conversion agreement, we assume everyone's going to follow. So having said that, do you have anything else you wanted to mark or go through?
No, aren't we going to that non-conversion, there'd be no objection that that's done by a de restriction?
Yeah, it'll be part of the overall documents that go to the board, so, um, the actual wording, I assume, we'll have to work here.
We'll work that out.
It'll say, the garage has to be garage, it can't be converted for habitable space or living space, there can't be any, um, rental of the garage, the third party that has to be an accessory used directly to the property and its property. Are you okay with us proceeding with this?
Absolutely.
If, David, do you mind being our first witness to discuss? Want to try that first? All right. The record is somewhere clear, I'm going to just start by, uh, use this microphone briefly and then turn it over, if you want to, um, just take your name and spell it so that David can get a fairly good record.
Yeah, just for the record, my name is Nathan Mosley, M O S L E Y, a licensed professional engineer.
Madam Chairman, um, we would just ask respectfully that he be accepted to the board as an expert in field of traffic engineering and that his testimony be given a weight on an expert in this field. Okay, thank you very much.
I believe Shropshire is associated with many of your people, I, I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think I've been here before this board before, but.
Shropshire.
I'll promote your, this is my way out, no question, I'm the expert.
All right.
Sure.
One for one on that, that's good. I know you've been involved in preparing plans and looking at the traffic circulation. If you could, walk us through your task to do by the applicant and the plan you came up with, focusing specifically on the density and how we feel like this site is very well suited for the number of units we're attempting to help.
Sure.
How do you do it, like, how do we have the proper.
Go ahead, turn this around. As long as the public can see.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they have it. Folks, can everybody see this?
Can't hear, can't hear.
Can't hear, back here.
You, you have?
Yeah, we have all that, we're fine.
You have, okay.
Thank you. So with respect to members of the public, we're going to, um, refer everything to the board, but we're going to keep this, um, board facing you all, is that okay? All right, thank you.
So yeah, I'm just kind of referencing off of the aerial site exhibit, uh, provided to you, showing the development. Uh, just, just to orient everybody and just to give you a little background, so in regards to this site and for the purposes of the use variance, when it comes to the traffic, you know, obviously the key thing that we want to look at are can the site, conduct traffic to be generated by it? And do we have any off-site impacts, what are the anticipated trips going to be? Ensuring that we have safe and efficient access for the proposed use and for any traffic associated with it, those are the main things that we want to look at. So in order to do that, we prepared a traffic study that was submitted in date of January 28th, 2022. Uh, the first thing we really do is we go out and we do traffic counts. Uh, so for this site, we did intersection counts at, uh, three locations in the vicinity of the site. So just to the bottom of the display, we counted the intersection of Eastham Road and, um, I'm sorry, Hartford, yes, thank you, trying to blank. Uh, Eastham and Hartford, which is an existing symbolized intersection, is a county intersection, it's under the jurisdiction of Camden County. We also counted the intersection of Hartford, Hartford Road and Sheffield, which is an existing residential cul-de-sac just to the north of Eastham Road. Um, and the reason we counted that location is because our proposed access will align with that existing Sheffield Drive cul-de-sac. We want to make sure that when we're looking at our future access point, that we can provide safe access there. And the other intersection that we looked at was just the intersection to the north, which was Hartford and Davis Road. So again, we just want to make sure we covered the immediate intersections nearby when we're looking at potential off-site impacts. Those counts were done in October of 2021, uh, they were done during the weekday AM peak period, which is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. We wanted to make sure that we captured any traffic associated with just commuters going to and from work as well as the nearby school traffic that would occur from buses and drop-offs and things like that. And then we also counted the afternoon from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM, again, so we could get both the school traffic, which typically is like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, as well as commuter traffic, which is more around the 4:00 to 6:00 timeframe. We take all that data, then we compile that data down into the peak hour, both in the morning and the afternoon, because we want to look at kind of the worst-case scenario as far as traffic volume and intensity is concerned for this existing area. And then we take that data and we look to the future and we want to see, you know, how much traffic we're going to add to those intersections and what our potential impacts are going to be. So again, we go to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they're a national, um, group and organization that collects traffic count data from hundreds of other sites throughout the country. They compile all that data into a manual that has trip generation rates in it and we use those rates to determine the amount of trips to be generated by this site. And it's based upon the type of land use and the number of units that are being proposed. So again, we have 108 townhome units being proposed, primary access is off of Hartford via a new road coming out opposite Sheffield Port. We do have a secondary emergency-only access potential, but for the purpose of this study, we really just looked at that main driveway and that, and that access point. So again, ITE gives us the rates that determine how much traffic we anticipate for the site and we look at just those peak hour trips, how many trips we're going to be adding during that busiest peak hour in the morning and how many trips we're going to be adding during the peak hour in the afternoon. Based on the rates that were provided based upon the number of units, the anticipation is that this site will generate about one trip per minute during those peak hour conditions, so about 60 trips in the AM peak hour, about 60 trips in the PM peak hour. The AM trips are split so that the majority of them are actually outbound trips, people that will be leaving the site, which is common for a residential project in the morning, and in the afternoon, the majority of the traffic will be coming back to the site, people returning from work, returning from activities in the afternoon, school pickups, whatever it may be. But that's, that's pretty common as well, you'd see with any other type of residential time. And I kind of match it with what the traffic patterns are in this area already, since we do have a lot of residential immediately surrounding the site. So once we determine the number of trips to be added, then we look at how we distribute those, those trips to the roadway network around us. Basically, we looked at the existing conditions and how traffic flows in this area. The majority of the traffic was all on Eastham Road in this area, so the majority of our trips are anticipated to be to and from that location, probably in the range of about 75% to 80% of our traffic would utilize Eastham Road to get to and from this site. We then add those trips to the adjacent roadway network. Uh, we look to the future as well by distributing just general background growth on top of the counts that we already done. We count for any other development that may occur, general growth in the town, general growth in the nearby area. That, that, that background growth rate is provided to us by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. It's the standardized rate that they determine for this area, and so we apply that to the existing accounts we already, we already collected. So once we have the existing conditions run out to the future, we add the traffic from our site, then the key thing is we want to look at what our impacts would be off-site as well as how our driveways will operate. And in order to do that, as traffic engineers we look to what's called levels of service. So levels of service are kind of an evaluation method that we use to look at either signalized or unsignalized intersections and look at the potential delays or delays experienced by drivers going through those intersections. So if you're at the intersection of Eastham Road and Hartford, you know, you come up to the light, you have to wait until you get a green. If you're on the side street, if you're on Hartford, you're going to have to wait a little bit longer because the signal is designed to provide more green time to Eastham Road, since that's the primary arterial through this, through this area. But again, we put all of that volume, all that analysis into it to determine the levels of service for the people going through that intersection. Same thing for a stop control intersection, you pull up to a stop sign, you're going to have to wait to make a left or a right turn or across the street. Uh, it's based on the volume on the main road, it's based on what you're making a left or a right-hand turn. All that goes into your level of service or the delay that you potentially experience. So those levels of service are classified from the level service A, meaning you have minimal delays going through the intersection, down to a level service F, which would mean you're sitting for a cycle or two of the signalized intersection trying to get through, uh, through that area. So based upon that, based upon those analysis criteria and based upon the data that we collected and the projections that we made, I just want to give a quick summary of how our traffic will, you know, will, will be, you know, analyzed and furthered. So the existing intersection of Eastham and Hartford currently operates in overall level service A during both the AM and the PM peak hour. In the future, it will continue to operate that overall level service. When you add in the additional traffic from your site, the only change is that in the afternoon peak hour, it will go from an overall level service A to a level service B. And really all it is, is that our traffic, um, there's threshold values between the, the levels of service. So when you cross a certain number of seconds in the leg, it goes from an A to a B. Basically, we're adding less than one second of overall delays in that intersection, however, we cross the threshold between a level service A to a level service B. So there's a slight degradation in level of service, but it's minimal, it's not a, it's not even kind of a concern. And again, our traffic really is minimal when you compare it to its already outcome today. So overall, we have good levels of service in visual movements, operators, good levels of service, even in the future with our additional traffic. At the other off-site intersections, at the intersection of Davis and Hartford as well as Sheffield, uh, Davis and Hartford, we have good levels of service, levels of service B or better for all the existing and future conditions. And then when we look at our specific intersection, uh, between our access and the existing Hartford and Sheffield Port intersection, again, in the future, we have levels of service B or better for all movements and there's really no issues there with, with delays, making a left or right in turn from stop signs, et cetera. So not only, you know, we have a minimal impact off-site, we want to make sure that we have safe and efficient access. I reviewed the site plan, I definitely have good levels of service in the driveway. The site plan does conform to the residential site improvement standards, we have good onsite circulation and access for all the proposed units and I believe that this project, as it's proposed here, can safely operate for the traffic that's anticipated for it and will have a minimal impact on the adjacent moving activity around it. And therefore, I think that, you know, the granting of the use variance for the density increase, um, is not going to create a, um, an unsafe condition or have any kind of a substantial burden on the existing master plan.
Based on everything you just said, which was a very impressive way of aligning, Morgan. Can you associate any negative with the development of this project if the board were to grant the density variance and what's fine?
I don't think there's going to be a negative impact, obviously there's going to be some additional trips, but I believe that the existing roadway network can accommodate those trips, it has sufficient capacity to handle those additional trips and the movements at the driveways can operate safely and efficiently, so therefore I don't think there's anything.
Thank you, and to the extent someone could possibly conceive that a negative to be associated with that, would the benefits of this development and the density we're seeking greatly outweigh any such negatives?
Uh, yeah, just from a traffic perspective, I just would, I would just, you know, state the fact that the driveway will operate safely and efficiently. I'll leave the comparison to the negative and positive for the players, but from a traffic perspective, I don't think that will have a significant impact in the extent of the zoning, uh, nor on the adjacent neighborhood.
Your professional opinion, based upon everything you've examined regarding the project as a whole, do you feel like the D variances of the density that the applicant is seeking is well-suited for the study?
I believe that the proposed use is suited to the site, you know, the traffic can be accommodated by the existing.
Please, Morgan, Mosley will be here continuously, certainly he has the ability to answer questions if you'd like, Anthony.
Couple of quick questions, Chairman Mosley. Uh, could you just elaborate what a level service A delay is and a level service B delay?
Sure.
Just so everyone can get a better feel of where, what is it?
No, good question, so a level service A for a signalized intersection means that a vehicle experiences basically 10 seconds or less delay when approaching an intersection, so if you're on Eastham Road, you have to come to a stop. On average, a, per, you know, each vehicle on average will experience less than 10 seconds of delay overall at that intersection, that's a level service A. A level service B would be an experienced delay between 10 and 15, 18 seconds. So it's, you know, again, we were just under the, you know, we're just at the kind of the upper level of level service A, around nine seconds before the traffic was at it, it goes to just over 10 seconds with the traffic being added, which is the change in level of service from A to B.
So the additional delay, as you indicated, is anywhere from like 1 to 3 seconds that would be generated from this development?
Yes, it's just under 1 second overall.
1 second overall.
Between the no building.
I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. When we talk about traffic and the different delays, would it be your professional opinion again that we're talking about a very minimal amount of time, even though it is level A to level B, the actual number of seconds is less than 5 seconds?
Yes, it's less than 1 second increase on average per vehicle driving through that intersection in the future conditions when you add in the additional trips you're passing.
Nice question?
Yeah, of course.
So did COVID tell you any role in, in this, like, when you look at numbers? Because I know I would go back to where the topic was very late at the time of the study.
So yeah, um, we did our counts in October of 2021, the schools were back in full session by then, obviously the school's right next door back basically to this area. Um, so before, I guess what I would say in the mid to late 2020, early 2021 timeframes, when we did do traffic counts, we were trying to look at historical values to see how our counts compared to pre-COVID conditions. Uh, and we were making adjustments then, I think now that schools are back in session and that, you know, a new, uh, I kind of call it the new normal, but the new patterns have been established, whether you're working from home or you're working in a new location, wherever it may be. I think that by the, the time these counts were done, that they are a good representation of what the traffic volumes are like in this area now, post-COVID or towards the end of COVID, wherever we are in this situation. So we didn't make any additional changes, um, but again, we have good levels of service and good capacity, even if I were to increase the volume, you know, by a percentage to, to account for that potential, I still think that the impact from this site is still minimal, um, the levels of service may change slightly, but the actual impact from our traffic generated would be, would be minimal, so.
I, I kind of find it hard to believe that you're only going to, with 57 cars and you're saying 75% are going to go to Eastham Road and you're only talking about a 1 more second or 3 second delay, you're hard to believe.
So, so again, you know, our.
One car was delayed 2 seconds.
So just as, you know, just as an example, in the AM peak hour, it's anticipated that our site will add approximately 46 total trips to that intersection during the AM peak hour. Um, so that's less than 1 vehicle per minute at that location during the busiest time. When you compare that volume to the existing volume that's already out there and the operations of that intersection and then you look at the average delay experienced by a vehicle going through that intersection during that peak hour conditions, the increase is minimal, because again, our traffic is not a significant portion of the volume and we're not talking about a, a large amount of traffic being added at that location.
Your counts, you have 56, uh, trips in the morning, on my street there's only 23 hours and I gave a server count, 26 cars, just on my street, in the AM hours. So you have 108 townhomes and you're suddenly saying it's 56, that's barely doubling the number of my street. So I don't see how you can have the number of 56 morning trips.
So again, you know, the, the trip generation rates that we use, um, look at the type of land use being proposed. So townhomes are different from single-family homes under the ITE land use classification. Um, a townhome is more similar to a, you know, a, uh, one or two-story apartment building, um, similar to what's already in this existing area along Hartford. Based upon the studies that have been done at other similar facilities throughout the country and based upon the data that they've collected and the number of units we had, those are the anticipated number of trips for the 108 units.
Right, I, I understand that, like, I, I also know that you can make your specific saying, whatever you want to be saying, your favorite.
Well, these are, these are the, these are the rates that we use throughout the entire country, these are accepted by the local boards, the counties and the state in New Jersey, um, they are the acceptable rates for this type of development.
Mr. Mosley, do you have that existing, you have that handy, that existing, uh, traffic count coming up to Eastham Avenue?
Sure.
I know it's anywhere. Well, I believe Mr. Rorke was talking about coming, uh, out of Hartford to the Eastham intersection.
And he was saying there were only 56 trips in the morning.
Additional, so what I'm asking you to correct, Mr. Mosley, is how many, based on his counts, are going to have that, he says, or, or, it was 70. So what's coming up with the, to Eastham from Hartford in the AM and PM?
So apparently today, uh, when the counts were done, the AM peak hour at the intersection of Eastham and Hartford, there were just over 1,300 people during the peak hour. of Eastham and Hartford, there were just over 1,300 vehicles during the peak hour going through that location.
So that's on the leg coming in?
That's total for the entire intersection.
I can't, I can't hear.
So, for Hartford Drive itself, the AM peak hour volume was 226 vehicles.
And what times are we talking about? Say AM?
From 7:15 to 8:00. So on Hartford Drive, there were 226 total vehicles. The majority of them were going out on the Eastham Road. Overall, at that intersection in the AM peak hour, there was 1,309 total trips counted. The PM peak hour, which was from 4:30 PM to 5:30 PM, had a total peak hour volume for the intersection of 1,360 vehicles. And on Hartford Drive, there were a total of 229 vehicles. Again, more vehicles coming in than going out, nearly identical to the AM, just reversing the volume and reversing the cost.
Those are the actual numbers, correct?
Yeah, the actual numbers counted by an actual person at that location.
Just clarifying.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board from the board? Thank you, Mr. Moseley. And then ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience here, we understand that you can look at and say, you know, I think the gentleman said, you can look at the numbers, garbage in, garbage out, it's generally the principle, that numbers can be manipulated. But I think what Mr. Moseley has to find, though, is these are the actual hard counts, correct? So although it might seem difficult to understand that the trip delay would just be so minimal, that's, those are real numbers, correct? We can't, we can't not use what we have as far as our real data.
Correct. These are the numbers actually counted on a typical weekday condition in that site.
I have a question?
Yeah.
So what would constitute, like you're saying right now that it's a, you didn't anticipate any negative effects? At what level would you anticipate, would it have to reach to become a negative effect as far as the data is concerned?
Sure. So typically, the typical level of service where you would have a concern about capacity at an intersection or impacts from the site would be if you had an intersection that went from, you know, a level service B to like a level service E. So it went down several levels overall. Typically, a level service A, B, C, or D is considered acceptable by the NJ DOT as far as capacity is concerned at an intersection or for an individual movement at a stop sign or even at a traffic signal. When you get down into level service Es or level service Fs, when you have delays that are in the range of 45 seconds or more, 60 seconds or even more than that, then, you know, either there's an existing overlay condition that maybe needs to be addressed or the traffic being added by a site has, you know, created a degradation levels of service by which you need to look at some potential mitigation at a location to improve it and, you know, accommodate the traffic generated by the site. In this case, because we have good levels of service today and we really don't see any significant degradation, there's no recommendation for any mitigation for this traffic specifically.
So would an example of a mitigation say if you reach that level E, or the level E level, oh, sorry, that's silly.
I talk about all the time.
So would a mitigation be, say, putting in a traffic light or a stoplight or flashing yellow light or something?
Yeah, you would look, obviously, at each individual situation, but, you know, in the case of, let's say, Eastham and Hartford, it's an existing signalized intersection. If you had delays like that, then maybe you would look to change the timings. Maybe you would look to add another lane if you, things like that. If it was a stop control intersection and you had a lot of people not being able to turn out onto the main road, you maybe look at a traffic light or maybe, you know, some other type of treatment to improve the conditions. But in this case, you know, we don't see any issues as far as delays in levels of service and the traffic.
We don't have a lot of information. There are townhomes and demographically, we're looking at mostly two people living in a unit with or without children, or I'm trying to figure out, are you talking about both people or two? Respectfully, I'm not sure. Mr. Moseley is the right person for that. We are going to address that specifically. So, and Mr. Ross and I talked about it earlier, we're going to have other people testify as to market, as to generally, to my, you know, point of view. So, from the traffic perspective, I respect that he asked, maybe that he's not the right guy.
Mr. Moseley's trying to say there's no traffic lane on.
He's really understanding.
I have a very small mirror that I try and say.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Moseley will be here for any other questions. But I think with regard to the big issue, which is how can this just generate a few extra seconds? I do respectfully think he's answered this question. It's something that the actual numbers we would say don't want. The math is the math, and his math, I believe, to be accurate, I would ask the board to please accept that as being accurate, understanding that members of the public and some board members think what a development of this size must generate more. I would respectfully say it doesn't, based on the level of action counts.
I do have one more question. How many, how many cars do you think would be per house? Like, I mean, like, I know my house has two cars, it has three cars, my children live in there.
For parking purposes?
Yeah, for parking purposes, for traffic purposes, this period.
Well, trip-wise, you know, we're looking at, you know, roughly 60 trips for 108 units. So, you know, during the peak hours, it's about one trip for every two units.
What about a rate of the residential site improvement standards?
Residential site improvement standards for, for parking or for traffic?
For parking.
They vary based on the number of bedrooms. I think the typical, if you don't know the number of bedrooms, the typical rate is like 2.1. I had to double-check that number. I'm not, I don't, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I can double-check that.
So basically, every other house would have some of these, or the local coming back and going back?
At the exact same time?
During those, during those peak hours, during the peak hours, obviously, the traffic over the day is going to be higher than that, but during that peak hour, those are the anticipated trips.
So on the application gels, they submitted, they had the townhomes generating 2.4 spaces per unit for a three-bedroom, typically a three-bedroom unit, and that's residential site improvement standards. So the state says there's 2.4 apartment spaces per unit. So they have to accommodate at least two on the site. This is further down, two on the site, and then add that overflow visitor park. And that's prescribed by the state. That is residential site improvement standards.
Correct.
And respectfully, we are complying with that.
Yeah, we do comply.
So again, once this was built, the parking would comply, the traffic would be based upon, as you said, one car leaving at a certain time per number of units, but that's only during the peak hours. There'll be people coming and going, of course, about the day, but we're most worried about the AM and PM rush hour.
People leave for work at different times in the mornings. Some people now work from home, take kids to school, so there's traffic coming in and out throughout an extended time. But when you look at just that peak hour and the data that we have, that's how we come up with those trips.
Anybody else?
Can we ask a question?
No, not this time. So we're going to open up the meeting to the public after everyone testifies, and then we'll open up to the public and you can ask any of our professionals or any of the professionals any questions regarding the density portion only, not regarding site plan, okay? So we'll open it up as soon as we're all done with our testimony, okay, sir? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moseley.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would submit for testimony at this point, if you are seeing the potential applications now, if any could have been sworn in, please explain to the board your vast experience and their education and accept it as an answer.
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners with a Master of City Planning from the University of Pennsylvania. Been practicing as a licensed professional planner in New Jersey since at least 2000, representing various municipalities as well as applicants before boards, parent master plans, ordinances, redevelopment plans, housing plans, and testimonies supporting various applications. In fact, I was a planner that disappeared back in 2000 and was working on the same application.
Well, accept that. Thank you. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen.
You too, thank you.
Come back here. And you're, good. Hopefully, you'll be back. Okay. And then, you've been sworn in earlier, you've heard what Mr. Moseley had to state about the traffic count. Obviously, you've been involved in the beginning of this regarding the planning. So from a planning perspective, I'm going to get out of your way now. Could you just please walk us through what's planned, the density variances we're seeking? Your professional opinion as it's very well-suited to site for a 5.1 unit per acre? And walk the board through how we get from some vacant land that is only being built?
So this property is, as you know, located off of Hartford Road, near Eastham Road. It is an 18.4 tract of land, acres of land, and it is vacant and located in your R3 residential zoning district. This property has history associated with it in terms of it having a prior approval for 100 units back in 2014. Townhouse units on this property, similar design, although this design layout provides more open space between the apartments and the buildings than what was proposed back in 2014. The proposed location of this is located proximate to your commercial shopping center where your Acme is, and you have your restaurants and a few other stores within there. It's proximate to the school as well. To the east of the property is a power plant type property for PSCMG. To the north of the property is residential, our residential units off of Davis Road. That's a different zoning district. That's your R2 zoning district, I believe. I have my zoning map, so I'm sure I have that right. It is a R2 zoning district. To the east where the PSCMG property is, is your public zoning district. And across Hartford Drive is the R1 zoning district. So you have a mix of variety of zoning districts in this area. This property is the R3 zone, and your R3 zone does permit townhouse units. It just, and it permits them at a density of three units per acre. And so because we are asking for more than what is allowed for the density requirement, we're here for a D5 variance. A D variance has different, there are different types of D variances. There's a one-use variance. That's when a use is not permitted on the property, and it has a much heavier burden to carry under the municipal annuals law. Then there are your D2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and this one is D5. D5 is a variance to allow for increased density, but the use itself is actually permitted. The courts have found and have stated that when you're looking at an application for a D5 variance, the standard of proof is different than an outright use variance. Basically, what has to be shown is not only that the use promotes those purposes of zoning that you're used to hearing for a use variance, but that the site can accommodate the proposed density without substantially impairing the intent of the zoning ordinance and impacting the public goods. Can the site accommodate the development without creating any negative impact and still function appropriately? That's why we started with some traffic testimony to show you what the impact is from the traffic and at least to give you a feel for what some of the impacts would be for the increased density.
I did have to stop you real quickly, though. Just to tie on the record, I'm sure this will come up for Mr. Ross. We're referring to the Coventry Square case. I'm sure everyone's familiar with that, which is 138 NJ 285. That's a New Jersey Supreme Court case along with Brown versus Seltzer, which is an appellate division case in 2007, 389 NJ Super 377. Just want that to be back.
And first, can you come on, do you have? And I don't have to say this, I'm not the attorney.
You have to, sir.
I can get it if we need it. So that's the standard we're looking at. Not is the site particularly suited, but can the site accommodate the density? And it's important to look at the history of the property because back in 2014, the board found that yes, the site can accommodate an increased density. And I believe that the conditions that existed then continue to exist today that make the site appropriate for the density that we're asking for. We are proposing a total of 108 units and that density becomes 5.85 units per acre. In terms of the standard of proof and what I'm going to demonstrate to you and why the site would accommodate the proposed density, there are certain purposes of zoning that I think are advanced through this application. I'm going to list them first, and then I'm going to go through reasons why I think they're advanced and how the site accommodates the development. For that, I mean, last of these. I believe that the purposes of zoning that would be advanced under this application include to provide adequate light, air, and open space, which is letter C of the municipal annuals law. To promote, under letter E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions of preservation of the environment. Letter G, to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Letter I, to promote a desired digital environment with creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And so I'm going to go through why I believe those purposes are advanced through the proposed density that we have on this application. First, when you look at the borough, there's really no townhouse units in Runnymede. There's housing stock is single-family or apartment, with the exception of the 24 townhouse units on Kimberly Drive. They are the only townhouse units that are located within the boundary of the borough of Runnymede. That's important because you have a different, different housing types permitted in your ordinance in the R3 zone, but there are only 24 of those existing. Your ordinance talks about, and your master plan talks about, providing a variety of housing units and a variety of income levels throughout to meet all of the needs of your population. You do have two multifamily developments located in the community, so one right next to us is Metropolitan Apartments, and then there's another apartment community. Outside of that, the rest of your community is generally located in, with single-family units. They're mostly built out. There's really not much land available for infill or development. And despite being located where it is, next to the apartments that have existed for some time, surrounded by different residential zones lends itself to an appropriate location to accommodate townhouse units in the borough. It's also proximate to the commercial uses on Eastham Road, providing appropriate access and blockability levels that may exist to get to the shopping center and provide interaction on the property. There's a range of density in the existing developed area. Kimberly Court, our drive, where the townhouse units are, their development is at 5.2 units per acre. Metropolitan Apartments has a density of 19.8 units per acre, substantially higher than anything in the borough itself. And then if you look at the single-family development that's existing on the other side of Hartford Road, can't extrapolate an exact density, but the average lot size is 8,000 square feet. And if you take edge 8,000 square feet through an acre and imply the density, that density is 5.4 units per acre. And that's important because that shows that the range of density is in the area that we fall within that range of density. At the proposed 5.8 units per acre, we fall between the higher apartments, a little bit over the single family, and somewhat consistent with the townhouses. Now, let's take that a step further. Your ordinance has standards. There are three different residential zoning districts. There's the R3 zone, which, when you look at the R3 zone and the purpose of the R3 zone, is to provide medium-density residential areas on the periphery of the R1 residential district areas and to promote creative subdivision design that balances residential development with common open space. It's the intent of the R3 district to encourage clustered single-family and townhouse development types, but also to acknowledge and permit using multifamily developments within that zone. So your R3 zone is your medium-density zone. And your single, if we look at it in terms of single families, the single-family lot size that's permitted is 8,000 square feet. Your ordinance restricts all development to three units per acre, but if you're not doing a major subdivision and you're just filling in lots, and the way the area has developed, you're at 8,000 square feet, and it's generally 5.4 units per acre. Your R1 zone is your higher-density zone, and that permits 6,000 square foot lots. That density works out to be implied at 7.26 units per acre. So you get a little bit more development in the R1 zone. And then your R2 zone is your lower-density zone, and that's a 20,000 square foot lot minimum, which is 2.17 units per acre. I referenced the different zoning districts in to show that the R3 zone at three units per acre doesn't really comport with the 8,000 square foot lot size and still, doesn't necessarily fall directly within a medium-density area. And that five-point, the proposed density of 5.8 acres still provides that middle ground between the 7.2 and the 2.15. This area is also located in the state, your whole borough is within the state planning area. The state plan has a planning map that tells you different areas for development and appropriate development intensities and infill development. The borough is located in the planning area one, which is the urban planning area, which is a growth area. Generally, when looking at development and looking at appropriate densities for housing developments in. developments in terms of doing vacant land analyses in the state planning area sections, you're guided to a density of eight units per acre in the PA one zone, which you are in, and the PA two, which surrounds you, parts of that part in different areas, the suburban areas, the density is guided at six units per acre. So we're under, the development proposed on the site is under, the density for the PA two doesn't quite reach what would be expected for a PA one and a suburban set set. I talk about these densities and these locations because it goes towards the purpose of zoning about to provide an appropriate population density to meet all of the needs of the citizens. So the density is appropriate on this property. It meets the surrounding area, and it meets the underlying standards, not just of your ordinance, but of the state planning documents. Let's talk about a variety of housing types. So in terms of your borough, you have mostly single-family homes, and they're mostly older homes. You haven't seen a lot of new development in terms of residential. In fact, based on New Jersey building permit data, which may not have everything in it, but it's close, there's six building permits issued for housing units since two thousand and eighteen. Six. And then prior to that, there had been no new development, no building permits issued before two thousand and thirteen, until at least before two thousand and thirteen. So you don't see a lot of development. You may see new homes, new reconstruction, remodeling, but not brand-new housing developments in the borough.
There's no land for that, just.
That's right. Well, that's what I'm saying. You don't have the land for that.
Just spot there.
Right. So you put, that being what it is, you have a kind of upgrading of housing. You don't have that mix of housing, as I indicated, because you're primarily single-family. In fact, seventy percent of your housing stock is listed, according to census data, as single-family. And eighty-eight percent of your housing stock was built before nineteen seventy-nine, so it's an older housing stock, which you know, you live here, and it's not a surprise. But I reference that because this helps to create a new type of housing category for the borough that provides a variety of housing types, provide a different mechanism for someone to live. It's not a single-family home, it's not an apartment. Townhouses are that middle where you're starting out, where you just want to have less land and place to live and retire. So you see either any of these factors in town. So that promotes that purpose. I also want to reference that your zoning ordinance does have two other R three zones. There's an R three zone located in, my glasses aren't there, I have to go to my house. In the northwest corner of the borough, kind of bordering Timber Creek, three forty-two in New Jersey Turnpike. Has no access. There is no right-of-way to it. So it's a piece of vacant land that can never relatively be developed, provide you with an opportunity for townhouses. That land most likely is state vacant for forever, because I don't know how you would necessarily get to it. You have another piece of R three zone, which is located Crescent Avenue and Smith Lane. It's got a single-family unit on it. One of the parts that has a single-family unit on it is almost three acres. And then there's another piece that kind of traverses behind Ida Fort and the lots on Ida Fort, and that's another two to three acres, neither of which are substantially developable for any type of townhouse type of development. And that's important, I think, to note, because this site really provides the only opportunity for this type of development in the community based on your zoning and based on practicality and based on location and availability of land. So if you were to have an opportunity for townhouses and you wanted to achieve the goals of the R three district to provide that medium-density development and to promote opportunities for townhouse developments, this is the only site to do that. So what you're losing by not being able to develop those other R three sites, we're able to accommodate here. This balances off that density that we're proposing, because you're not going to see that happen in the other zones that you have designated in the borough. There is another R three zone that was created with your master plan. I don't see it on the zoning map, but it was in the master plan, recommended that Kimberly Court be changed from R two to R three. It already developed, and that's an existing development. Another factor to consider in this application is the surrounding area. I noted earlier that you have the PSC and G property. That property is over eleven acres in size. The way this has been structured would create almost two, there's almost two hundred and forty feet of wooded area from our property line to the developed portion of that site. That takes two almost acres of land that's undeveloped, that really abuts our property even though we don't own it. So it creates a larger feeling of open space, because you're not going to see additional development on the substation or power plant property with PSC and G, and that open space kind of helps to minimize the impact from increased development on this property in terms of density. I also want to talk about the aspects and the ordinance that deal with townhouses. I read to you the purpose of the ordinance, to encourage clustered single-family and townhouse development types. But your ordinance goes on to talk about specific standards for townhouses. The ordinance provides design standards and indicates that the purpose of providing for the development of twin or townhouse units in the R three zone is to provide flexibility and a variety of housing types and to encourage a subdivision design approach that considers the environmental and physical attributes of a site. The site's relationship to the surrounding area and most desirable and appropriate locations for home sites. The allowance for single-family homes, twin, duplex, and townhouse units on relatively small lots enables planned residential development that will balance developed areas with the protection of wooded and environmental-sensitive areas on-site. Goes on to state too that the cluster provisions may reduce the amount of clearing, grading, and construction disturbance resulting from subdivisions and increase the quantity and quality of open spaces, providing a desired residential environment through creative development techniques and designs and arrangements.
And to the record, Tiffany, we're talking about section three ninety-five dash eight point F, correct?
Letter one, or I get number one on that.
Just add that from the row number. I think.
Get more of that, okay.
Oh, good. We were.
And I've read that into the record, because the way this site has been designed includes open space inconsistent with your ordinance. Your ordinance actually has a standard for the maximum amount, or the minimum amount of open space on the property at thirty-five percent. And we meet or exceed, we're at least at thirty-six percent, and we haven't done our site plan design, so it might actually increase as we go through the design, but we at least meet that. And that's important, because it shows that the site, even though we're asking for an increased density, can accommodate the open space requirements of your ordinance, because we're not looking to impede that requirement. We're also able to conform with basically your setback requirements in terms of the townhouse standards and the impervious coverage on individual lots and the minimum floor area requirement. You know, the minimum floor area requirement for a townhouse of a thousand square feet, that's a small, small. We're proposing units that are at least one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet is our footprint, our floor area. So we're providing buildings that are reasonably sized without overdeveloping the site in terms of using more of the property.
Tiffany, I'm going to stop you again, I'm sorry. But this is very important. Even with the grant, if the board ceased it to do so, of the additional density, the project still meets or exceeds all of the other requirements.
Correct.
Okay.
So that aspect of the development, meeting or exceeding the open space area, goes towards two aspects of the purposes of zoning. The first is that purpose of zoning to provide adequate light air and open space. We're not over-putting too many structures on this property. We have spaces and blocks of buildings. It's not a single building. They're not clumped together. There's open space around the buildings. There's open space provided between the buildings and the apartment areas. There is open space provided along the residential R two district, and it will provide buffers around the property. I know there was comments in your professional report, we will provide buffers around the property to ensure that there is adequate landscaping and protections. These are, these simple lots, and there's areas, plenty of areas to accommodate the landscaping that's necessary to reduce that potential impact. Additionally, that aspect of the ordinance and meeting all of the standards goes towards creating a desired visual environment, your creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And I like to focus, because the desired visual environment is an aesthetic thing, but it's not so much that. It's the rest of that purpose of zoning that I believe is really important, that we're doing that through. Creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And that's actually referenced in your ordinance that I read, to create a development technique and design arrangements in terms of the design of the developments in the R three zone. This development, in my professional opinion, provides and advances that purpose of zoning using a piece of land that is basically, you have an apartment development with a density of nineteen point eight units per acre. You have a lot of apartment units on the front of this property that this property circles around. And because it circles around these apartments, although you have the R two to the north and the R one to the west, this area is isolated around these apartments. It's not sitting in the middle of a single-family area, but any development that occurs, when you pull in and you are in any development on this property, you're going to be more so related to the apartment development. You're not going to have the shared access, but you're going to be in the same vicinity. And so it makes sense to have a step down of density and housing types and not to underutilize the property, to make sure that it works together, creating that good civic design and arrangement. So, let's see. One of the improvements to this plan versus what was proposed in two thousand and fourteen, as I looked at both plans, is that there's actually been consideration given to the apartment area, so that there is actually open space. Where before, the buildings were back-to-back with the apartment buildings. So now there's open space, and the buildings are not back-to-back, and there's more open space between them to give more light air and open space as well. So in summary, in terms of the positive criteria and the purposes of zoning, the site can accommodate the development, in my professional opinion. The parking will exceed, meet or exceed the RSI of standards, will have more than is necessary in terms of two point four per unit. The open space will meet or exceed the ordinance requirements. The setbacks will meet or exceed the ordinance requirements. We provide buffers around the perimeter of the property. And you heard in the testimony from the Mosley regarding the traffic, that the impact to the roadways is not substantial. And I want to piggyback on that, because I know one of the comments from the board members was, it's fifty-six cars. He's looking at the peak hour from seven fifteen to eight fifteen. The rest of the cars might go before seven fifteen or after eight fifteen. Not saying there's only going to be fifty-six vehicles total, just that in that hour, that's when we'll see the most amount coming out from the development. So it's not a playing of numbers, it's looking at a single hour and what the impact is at the heaviest period of time on the roadway. And from that, we've had less than about a second delay and change in the intersection, which is not substantial and is important, because it goes towards how the site can accommodate the development. Now, can the site accommodate the development? When we're talking about this, we're talking about a comparison of not vacant land to what is proposed of a hundred and eight units. We're talking about a comparison of this site will be developed no matter what. Not no matter what, but it has the right to be developed. It may not, it could be single-family, it could, whatever it is, there is some development rights on this property. There will be some impact from development. We believe that the way we have proposed this development, it provides a better zoning alternative with the increased density. It is able to be accommodated on the property. It's consistent with the surrounding area and the ranges of density that are within the borough and specific to this site. The location of the apartments plays a big role in making this site appropriate for the density that we're proposing, because there is development in that area which impacts how this site is going to be developed. The negative criteria, which I want to touch on, and I think I hit most of them, I'm just going to summarize, because I talked about it in the positive criteria. Is there a substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance or your master plan, or is there a substantial detriment to the public good? The only thing that I really don't believe I touched on is the impairment of your master plan. I talked about the ordinance and the standards and how we will meet or exceed all of them. I talked about the impacts from the traffic, referencing Mr. Mosley's information. I talked about providing buffers. So the last aspect of what I want to address is the impact and impairment of your master plan. Your master plan was reexamined in two thousand and seventeen, although adopted in March of two thousand and eighteen, so there's two dates on it. And it has various goals and objectives. Your master plan is very thorough. It goes back and talks about the nineteen ninety-two goals, the two thousand and ten goals, and proposed goals moving forward. The master plan continues to have the land use goal to promote the balance among a variety of land uses that will support and improve the development character of the borough, guide new development and redevelopment to assure efficient and beneficial utilization of scarce land, whilst capitalizing on the inherent public facility and service efficiencies of the concentrated development patterns. Within that goal, they have set their two objectives, two, well, there are actually four objectives, but they talk about infilling in appropriate locations, creating appropriate design standards, and making sure that you have the right zoning controls to make sure there's no incompatible land uses. Another goal in your master plan is the housing goal, which is referenced in the R three zone, to provide a wide variety of housing types to meet the current and future populations at all socioeconomic levels. And that's important, because as I indicated, you only have twenty-four townhouses in the community, and townhouses are something that you're urging in the R three district, and this really is the only property that can accommodate that given the development in the community. Your master plan also talks about land use goals from two thousand and ten, and added a new land use goal to promote opportunities for redevelopment and adaptive reuse of existing buildings, but also to aim to assume the characteristics of the region's most livable and vibrant communities with a mix of vibrant residential neighborhoods, diverse architecture, busting businesses and entertainment districts, and creating where community is a way of life. And I'm summarizing part of that. But in essence, providing another mix of housing opportunities and a variety within the community, which is an application, and my professional opinion does. The last thing I want to note from your master plan, as it relates to how, I don't believe, I'm sorry. There's a section in the master plan that talks about the economic recovery, because it was two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. And I'm going to read a paragraph off of page twenty in your master plan. It's the first paragraph on page twenty. While economic recovery from the recession is underway, the economic changes that have taken place may have longer-lasting impacts on society's preferences, priorities, and housing choices, directing more interest toward redevelopment and smart growth in the long run. Many experts agree that the general societal trend will not likely revert fully to its pre-recession affinity for conspicuous consumption. Preferences for large houses on large lots with large gas buses and SUVs in the driveways and far-flung suburbs may be replaced, or at least for some, by preferences for smaller lots in compact neighborhoods with an established sense of community and a sense of place, with smaller homes that are more energy-efficient and closer to places of work. If the predictions are correct, the changing consumer preference will be to benefit of land use. This townhouse development provides an opportunity for that compact development. You don't have the large lot, single-family homes. It provides an alternative type of housing. It provides a community where there's not a lot of maintenance and upkeep, but you still have ownership of some of your land, so you feel like you're in a home, but you don't have to take care of the entire grounds. This provides different opportunities for the residents, current and future, in the borough of Runnymede. I did talk about the state planning area, and I've also referenced in your master plan, I don't mean to revisit that. And I've noted that, given those goals and objectives, given the fact that this is the only piece of property that's really available in your R three zone, to provide and advance those purposes of providing that variety of housing in the community, I believe there's no substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance by allowing for the increased density on this property. That when you look at what could be developed in the other R three areas that will not be able to be developed. able to be developed, you're almost substituting that here. And in this location, given the open space to the east with the area that's not developed because of the utility uses that are there and the dense development to the west, it fits in perfectly and can be accommodated on the property without any substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance or your zone plan while still advancing those purposes of zoning that I enumerated through my testimony. And in that aspect, I believe that the positives would substantially outweigh the detriments and it would fit and work on this property. Thank you.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
First one is, when you compare the eight thousand square foot single-family at a density of five point four per acre, that straight, a hundred percent eight thousand square foot lot, that doesn't apply for any brightaways or anything else? So it most likely is not five point four. It's going to be less than that, probably closer to the fours.
In terms of the residential units that are currently existing?
Yes.
So there are larger lots and smaller lots, and so I use that eight thousand as the average because some of the lots that are on Sherrington Lane and Sherry Drive, that community, they're different sizes.
Did it take into account the streets?
It did not. I just did a straight implied density.
So would it be fair to say that it's not, the existing residential, single-family is not five point, five point four? It's most likely lesser than that because we have brightways, we have streets all the way through.
Yes and no, because again, there are lots that were larger, but I don't know if it was substantially lower, but it might alter slightly. There are some lots that were over eight thousand square feet, so we balance that out.
Second one is, who lives in the townhouses? This is a question from our, so who would you expect based on your professional opinion of you living in the townhouses?
I think in my professional opinion, what I see in townhouses are people that are starting out, newly married or young professionals that one of the paths that they own and worked their way into single-family. However, you see a lot more today that young professionals are staying young professionals, younger, not starting families early. And you also see that they don't necessarily want to have those larger homes. So you see the younger, the younger groups. Then when you also see as they age out, if you do start having a family, they age out in the townhouse community, you see the older population retiring, empty masters that want to downsize, but still want to own something.
Tiffany, I got to ask you. So the bottom line here is, first point, you can't compare it to single-family, in my opinion, okay? So we're talking at this large, those, that development which I live in is forty-two, forty-four years old. The apartment's metropolitan, wherever they were before that is sixty years old. You're here tonight and I understand what you guys are trying to do, I do, and that's your profession, that's how you guys deal with it. Right now, you could build fifty-three townhouses, correct? Without any variance and?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. So you're, you're going for fifty-three more, so you're doubling it and basically you're doubling it for the value that you, or the profit that you're going to make from. I say that's a bad thing, but you know, you can't try to mislead people and say, hey, it's going to benefit this and that. Bottom line is, you're here to profit from us either granting or waiving or putting down.
Of course, I think all development by its very nature is for the developer to feel.
And again, I can't vote on this until I got it here from, because half the people in this room tonight I know or live near me or whatever, so I can't make any decisions. And I know they have questions, just like I do, on how this is all going to pan out for us, you know? Or the owners are back there for twenty, thirty, first are original owners, there's a lot of, what if this, what if that, you know? Hey, I don't want, I got people now, not to go off the track here, but I mean, we have FedEx.
Dan, are you within two hundred feet of this project?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
All right, I'm trying. Yeah, sure. Somebody else is within two hundred feet of this project.
I'm good, somebody else.
I just want to answer about the economics. So it's an aspect of it that you have, this type of development, a townhouse development, is going to require a homeowner's association. And in order for a homeowner's association to maintain those basins and take care of what needs to be taken care of, there has to be a certain number of units in order to make that number of association effective, otherwise the fees are too high for the property owners. And that contributes to part of why this development is designed.
Well, you're going from three to just about six. Why not three or four? You know what I mean?
I just wanted to explain that aspect of it, that it's more than just, there's more to it.
What's the hurdle for that to make it?
I, I have, I don't know what the hurdle is to make it right, since the total cost of maintaining the basins and how much the homeowners are able to contribute on your new basins because you pay the HOA on your new basins. And those fees can go up and then come down and.
And the goal also is to make it for the people who can sort of live there, you know? You have fewer units with higher homeowners cost, it's harder to move in. The goal is to make it as, I think, the question is correct, why more? And the answer is because it's viable that way where potentially not viable is left. And that's something that we have to discuss, of course, that the goal is to make this a project that can get built. And clearly, there's a large tract of land in the R three zone that's undeveloped, that we believe should be developed. And this is the way that the property feels they want to fix it up. Are there other alternatives, of course? There's, there's always other alternatives, which is why we're here. If this were vibrant development, we'd just find the building projects. But I guess this is the result of this project sitting for so long, not being developed, now a plan that the people need work, who like their own, traffic and the plan that the people need wants. Obviously, it's going to be all sort of, but you all voted for the vote, one way or the other, but your question is, why business? It is economics and everything else. There's no overarching benefit that exists where you would say, there's something that we're missing. We're talking about development of a project because this is what the business is that developed for the right.
My knowledge takes many to why it fits into this area.
I understand.
Tiffany, I have a question. I'm not sure if the only answer is to the law. Why was the, this originally said three units? Do we know that?
I do, I do not know why that was in the ordinance. I know back in two thousand and fourteen, there was a lot of discussion because of the clustering requirement and there were changes to the ordinance that were made. I don't know, Steve, did you?
At the time, there's others, I was here, at the time, that is what the board established as the density. There was discussion of five units per acre. There was discussions of parkings, there was a lot of discussions during that process, but the board ultimately arrived at, as a recommendation, of demand and council as, as the zone standards is what's in your ordinance right now.
So they were approved in two thousand and fourteen for three?
No.
No, they were approved for a hundred units. They went as a four feet. And I believe, we didn't, we didn't have the current standards in place.
We did not.
And that's why they're here, that's why, and I'm referring to the attorney, but that's why that previous approval is no longer valid because the zoning changed. If the zoning did not change, they would still be vested in the hundred unit approval that they just used variance for back in fourteen. But now we have the new zoning standards.
But they didn't act on that when they were approved.
Well, they were approved.
They were approved, but zoning.
The site was approved.
The site was approved, wasn't, there wasn't.
Different authority.
No, I'm saying that, yeah.
Right, but the use variance was with the land.
Mr. Sanders.
And it was approved for a hundred townhouses. But the zoning standards changed, so they have to return for a new use variance.
That's correct. And the zoning not changed, it would have been running with the land indefinitely.
Correct.
And it stayed under a hundred.
The intervening change of the zoning code is why we're back.
But when the previous guy came in and this board approved whoever was on there, a hundred units, they had so many months or years to act on that, right before the zoning changed.
Because our ordinance does not put a time table on a use range. Our ordinance in surrounding communities does, and rather than just, they actually put either in the resolution of approval, a definitive time period for running these two years, or is written into their ordinance of two years. We do not have that to determine running. So the use variance runs, correct, until it's changed, until it's changed and the state changes or the R three zoning changes.
Okay.
Is it with an economic recession in there?
We, we felt the need to change it because we didn't want that much.
So final questions, and this might come later, but do you have like a positive dollar value or have some property for the cause? That's coming later? Or that's not?
We can, we can discuss it briefly if you'd like now, it's just a general question.
Yes.
Yeah, well, come on up, you're all, Tiffany, thank you.
And then also one more question that Josh Park was giving, do you have guest parks in the state? Yes, the RSI requires guest parking to be included and that's like a point five.
Look there, you learned point three.
Okay.
And they're trying to do one street parking. And this site may accommodate perfectly the alert off of the side of the road, the access accommodate more parking areas, because very several subjects, that's the site right now.
You're sworn, but please get data, your ordinance will get right down directly. Robert Fettow, D R Oregon, dress two forty, great draw, Al Gore, Jerry.
How do you spell that base name, Mark?
F E C S O.
You did sworn in, and that was a question by a board member, but they probably have some other questions about the development, so it's a good one.
Yeah, this development, we see it's going to be three bedrooms, it's going to be young professionals, people who will move out. This development probably going to have, it's going to have three bedrooms and the rate is going to be from fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred square foot unit. And it's going to be young professionals, or it's going to be people that want to move out of their larger, single-family homes or so on, once they just move out of their apartment. That's who we're targeting. And the price range here will be in the upper two hundred thousand dollars. And the reason why, the master planner back then, but the other person was here, he was looking for a hundred and fourteen units, I was looking for a hundred and eighty. For the make-up fees, well, we keep the HOA fees down. You want to be in the two hundred dollar range or lower for HOA range, you want a hundred units, that's like the number. That's why that, that gentleman was looking for a hundred and fourteen, and I thought I was for a hundred and eighty. Hopefully, I get to a hundred, so make-up fees, well, I can afford just about a townhouse three. Other than that, if I go down to fifty something, instead of being in that two hundred dollar range I'm shooting for, or maybe it's going to be four hundred. Because I have the same amount of road, I'm going to have all that, I'm going to have the water quality basis, everything just comes up.
So the site itself stays exactly the same, but now you have fewer people paying those fees for it.
Here are the experts, I'm not a professional. That sounds like a lot of money to work, whatever, how many units you want to put there. If you just did fifty-three or fifty-five, whatever you're in now, now.
It's going to go, it's not.
Four hundred?
It's going to double.
So, so each of these units won't have a basement? Is that right or wrong?
No, these are slabbed, I'm afraid.
All slabbed. Two and a half bags?
Yes.
And then living room, kitchen, dining room?
Yes, and also we put extra storage in our garages here because we found these townhouse communities, they had the shallow garage, and I, we bumped our unit up to thirty-seven feet, and you get the extra two feet for the garbage can, the bike storage and all that. You see a lot of the older townhouse communities, that's one of the problems we found, they didn't have big enough storage space, so we enlarged our units a little bit to accommodate the extra storage in the units.
And no two bedrooms, no four bedrooms, it's all just?
Three bedrooms.
And then are we obligated for any, like low income?
What's the, the? Due to the lack of development pressures and also based on the?
How much open ground?
Open ground and development opportunities and pressures. As the data that was provided during the court-administered fair share housing process, decided not to participate in the court-administered process, so we do not have?
Any kind of quota or?
We don't, we don't have an active plan.
Okay.
And that's actually said in your master plan, the examination. So we, right now, this site could not be obligated for any, one side of affordable housing or any affordable housing fees.
And to that, to that effect, I guess the question is, are you going to tend to not have any Section eight housing?
Yeah.
And then eliminated making the garage another living area, is that right?
It's going to be deed, it's going to be a deed restriction in Russell. And we, these are feasible, this is on a condo ownership.
Right.
These are feasible lots, and it's going to be a deed restriction on every individual. And if they do do that and they try to sell it, they would have to convert it back.
Yeah, if they are CO or anything like that, anyway.
Anything else for Mr. Pesca? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, speaking of?
Yes, for the record, Charles Chalati, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My background is, I'm a contractor. I went to school at night for engineering. I've been a licensed professional engineer since about two thousand and six. I've actually been involved in construction and land development since I was eighteen years old and I just turned twenty-eight. So that's, the end of my show.
Chairman, I would ask that you be said that as an expert, you're in here, please. So it's, all right, thank you, Mark. I was talking about your involvement in the project, you've heard, obviously, three of our people testified already, if you could just follow up with where we stand right now with the R three development, how this is a very well-suited project, and the intensity of the project will not exceed the analysis of the site.
Sure, it's basically, most of my involvement is going to be, if the board were to approve this back to the site plan, you'll hear a lot from me. This is a lot, the engineering parts of this is really limited to this hearing, but our company, Consulting Engineer Services, was retained to come out and, A, take a pretty good survey of the property, take a look around, find everything we could possibly find on the property, and that's both on a paper side, from a land survey standpoint, and then on an engineering standpoint, from what's actually out there in the field. Myself, staff, licensed professional engineers, or I'm sorry, surveyors, have walked this site numerous times. I've seen one rain event, it wasn't particularly heavy, but I did see where water, general water patterns were going and things like that. And would note that, everyone here knows, there's an unnamed tributary to Otter Brook along the eastern boundary of the property, between this property and the PSE and G substation over here. We have been in contact with PSE and G, we've been sharing some plans back and forth, so we have a pretty good idea where that stream starts and where that stream ends up. We will be submitting permits and applications to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for a freshwater wetlands delineation and also a flood hazard determination. The, both of those can be really complex, but in this particular case, we are resubmitting almost the same exact information that PSE and G just submitted and was approved by the DEP in two thousand and eighteen. The other areas that we're focusing on, and we work, will work very closely with Mr. Bach, is the stormwater runoff from the proposed development. I said it is more of a site plan issue, but there are new stormwater regulations in state of New Jersey, which require green infrastructure, require a lot more attention to detail and a lot more investigation. We have not done the soil borings here yet, however, I have walked the site and took a couple little shovel pulls here and there, I've looked at the sands and see what's there. Most of this dirt that's underneath the site was all disturbed back in nineteen seventy. We've looked at this and seen, you know, aerial photographs, that this was completely clear in about nineteen, somewhere between nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-five. The dirt here is all relatively good sand, so we're not anticipating any issues with stormwater. The structural capabilities of holding roads seem pretty straightforward. Um, the structural capabilities of holding roads seem pretty straightforward, um, just looking at, uh, the characteristics, uh, we are looking at increased buffers along the adjacent residential properties here, uh, also along Davis, up in that area. Uh, the other interesting thing we found, at least from an engineering standpoint, is that clearing that happened in nineteen seventy, looks like somebody put a bunch of infrastructure in here. Um, I almost tripped personally, over a fire hydrant that was sitting in the middle of woods, which I was, just wasn't expecting to see, in the middle of a wooded lot, uh, but there is stormwater infrastructure, uh, located in this area of the site, uh, it does, um, somewhere gets from here over to an outfall, that's here, right at that unnamed tributary to Otterbrook, and then there's also another headwall and stormwater pipe coming from the apartment building here. Um, that, uh, display there shows kind of a little bit better, and I don't know if I can get there, I promise I can talk about. Uh, the best we've been able to determine so far is that the stormwater infrastructure that's installed along back here in discharges to this point, drains most of this neighborhood. Uh, there are no records, I know we've talked to Mr. Bach, we've talked to public works about it, um, part of the eventual site plan, should the board approve this application, will be to correct that. Uh, there's also some sanitary sewer pipe out there, uh, there's a pump station, existing borough pump station, uh, back in here, and I would note that the borough, I think just recently, or somewhat recently, took over the operations of the Running Meet Sewer Authority, so it was a whole nother organization that had it until somewhat recently, uh, but there is a pump station here, and there is sewer piping in an easement that runs over to Harper Drive, which drains most of, collects most of the sanitary sewer from that neighborhood. Uh, however, there's some sewer pipe that we can't quite see where it goes yet, and we will have those answers by the time the site plan, uh, if it is approved. Uh, that looks like it's draining some of this, it may be picking up some houses here, and there's a possibility it's getting stuff from over here too. Um, so, once again, from an engineering standpoint, you'll hear a lot more about this next time, if we are approved, and I think we've also agreed to stand outside after the meeting tonight and answer any questions as far as stormwater or any other engineering questions. I, maybe, I don't know, I mean, they don't meet the new, I guess, the basic question is, from a stormwater standpoint, will be, will there be any impacts to the surrounding properties, and I can definitively say now, there will not be, because the new standards that the state has, that your engineer will enforce on the applicant, will prohibit that. We will be doing a lot of testing, we will be doing a lot of analysis, we'll be doing a lot of calculations to address all that, and I think this kind of touches on some of the questions that came up on cost. Um, we have to do that whether we build one unit here, or then we build fifty units, or a hundred and eight units. So, the cost to the developer, or any developer for projects, is a very high number in New Jersey. I mean, all of us are residents here, we know New Jersey, it costs more to live here than any other state, for the most part, other than maybe California, okay? So, development costs more, same thing with everything else in New Jersey. So, that amount of, uh, stormwater, uh, work is still going to occur, but what density is built out here? Any questions?
Madam Chairman, I just did a, wanted to ask, uh, do you want to discuss at this point, architecture, is this something you wait for?
I think we'll, I think that's like.
Yeah, you can do that, sorry.
We're going to have a site thing.
What, uh, I know the board has had some questions regarding the difference between what your ordinance allows for and what's being proposed, and a couple of questions have to do with, could there be less development, could there be a change? I think, at least initially, that was, the goal is to go in with what's been submitted, but I know that, you know, there's a sensitivity or, with regard to, but it seems like something board member, that we might be too much density, so I was unsure if that's something that the board wanted to discuss now, or if that would be something for.
For your, for your folks on that?
No, a hundred percent.
I don't want to, I don't want to go in front of them, that can be professionally involved, right?
Yeah. We would be, uh, Madam Chairman, complete with our testimony, with the understanding that depending on comments here, that we'd have the right to recall, based on what's been submitted, and that each of the professionals has given, and in addition to the applicant, self-information which would allow the board to grant the Z variances that the application has submitted. I would imagine, based on what we're seeing at hearing, that some members of the public are going to have some good tough questions for us, but we're prepared for, but, um, with the ability to get everybody back on their feet, if necessary, we would temporarily rest subject to being able to answer questions, as asked by whoever would love to answer this question.
Absolutely.
And then, who's the board members, or professionals?
Steve, um, we have all been in receipt of your review letter, uh, do you have any, uh, need to go through it, point by point, I mean, they already considered that they agree with it? I think it's redundant.
The board is on the applicant to show that, uh, if you already heard it, the testament to show that the site can accommodate, you know, and we'll get back to that, and we'll do the summary, and it was probably a good idea to go to the public at that point, in the application.
We can do that, or?
To talk about.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did Chair, do it.
I mean, we can, we can.
I've heard of the chair.
We can, we can do that, I just, um, if anybody have any, before we move on, anybody have any questions for Mr. Bach, you know, regarding the review letter, I believe, I don't know if he's done it, and go through it, bullet point by bullet point, but if anybody has any questions about the review letter for Mr. Bach, concerning, um, you know, answering questions before we're done, of course.
I was just wondering how much of the area would have to be clear cut, because a lot of it is wooded, correct?
You're right, uh, that's probably a good question for the applicant, Mr. Shalati, but it's my understanding that, uh, it really is going to be selectively cleared through a compacted roadway and the single bounding and the stormwater, uh, and there's areas of the site that cannot be cleared because of topography and grade differences, but Mr. Shalati, can you confirm that?
I can confirm that, and that's the simple answer. Um, once again, getting back to the cost issue, clearing and taking things down costs money, so we want to really focus, and it has a side benefit here, because it also, keeping that mature vegetation, uh, and I'm not a landscape architect, or a tree person, or have much knowledge of it, I know it's a tree, a shrub, and a grass, uh, but there are some mature trees here, but once again, those are all limited to nineteen seventy-five, so anything you see here, we will look to try to maintain it, but it is still relatively recent growth.
So, so clearing that wooded area will impact the runoff, correct?
Uh, it will, it will impact runoff during the construction aspects of it, however, there is another agency besides even Mr. Bach that takes a look at that, and that's the Camden County Soil Conservation District, so they monitor every, A, they review everything that's done for any site clearing operations, for anything greater than five thousand square feet in Camden County, but also, two, on larger sites like this, they pay specific attention to those kind of details, and especially here with the waterway, which even though it's an unnamed tributary, that looks like it starts at the water tower, the best I can determine, I walked that entire stream up, from Eve Sham Road back up to the water tower, and I get to a point where I walk up on solid ground, and I don't see anything coming here, I don't see anything across Davis Road, I don't know where that water come, maybe it's a seat, maybe there's a leak in the water tower, I don't know, but, um, they're going to monitor everything very carefully on this site, especially because of that waterway.
In terms of runoff, that was erosion runoff, but they are going to have to comply with, uh, the New Jersey D E P best management practices for stormwater, every aspect, the updated regulations adopted by, uh, the Borough Running Meet, uh, not only includes stormwater quality, which is the green infrastructure and the center of the basin, but also stormwater quantity. So, a hundred-year storm, right now, it's, it masses a lightly wooded track, but, and it has very little stormwater coming off of the site. They have to make it eighty percent better than it is today, as they develop, that's why they have to put in all the stormwater basins, with all the mechanisms and everything else. There is no relief from that, they must provide that. Also, the new stormwater regulations actually now require groundwater bounding analysis, so it actually requires, how do those basins react with the other groundwater in the area? And they have to prove that they are not negatively impacting any, any other groundwater, uh, to any of their proposed structures, or any other structures, or any other properties around that. So, there's a lot of steps they would have to take, if they're successful here tonight and proceed to a, a major subdivision site plan, uh, all those things have to be prescribed. I would say that, in terms of requirements of stormwater, the state has increased it by another twenty percent over the, with the new regulations. You know, it started in nineteen ninety-four, they upgraded in two thousand and six, and with this recent round, it is very considerable of what they would have to do. So, any stormwater action gets better, at the end of the day, with the development that comes through.
So, the state would determine, in order to offset how much of that vegetation is removed, because a lot, that's going to maintain all the wood, right, the exploding trees?
The, the calculations are based on the ground cover, so little, a very little amount comes off of, of wooded track versus a residential developed track, so that, that is all prescribed in the regulations. And our job, uh, as well as the D E P, when they look at land use, applications for wetlands and flood hazard, as well as Camden County Soil Conservation, we all have to follow the same rule book, the applicant has to demonstrate that they're following the rule book as well, because we cannot provide any relief, because the municipality has its own stormwater, uh, permit with the state of New Jersey, and we have to certify every year that we're not providing any relief or any variances from the stormwater regulations.
There is another stream back there, the size of the one you were talking about, the road that used to go to the pool Harper wants to put in.
Yes.
There's another stream there.
It's, that, that area there, it, just looking at it, and once again, um, you have a lot more experience with the site than I do, but I have walked it extensively, it almost seemed to me, we saw some erosion areas that could be a channel in that area, some of it appeared to be coming, once again, I couldn't get out there in a heavy enough rain to see it, but that stormwater system that is coming off of the adjacent streets, which I think runs almost all the way up to Schuber, that's how far it goes, that's, doesn't appear to be completely intact, because what I saw was some inlets, and then that don't appear to be connected, or have, you know, there's holes in the inlet, so that water appears to be bubbling up and then running overland.
No, I was talking about, there was, there used to be a road that went back to the pool that was back there.
Okay.
You know where the pool was?
Yeah, the pool's up in that right-hand corner of the site.
There's a road that went back there, and there's, I guess, is it called a culvert? It went underground, and it was streaming right through there too.
Okay, um, I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting and see if you could point me in that direction, I'll go out and take a look.
Could you point to where the pool was?
Yes, uh, the pool was roughly in this area.
Okay.
Let me make sure you see this. Well, there is, I've seen an old aerial photograph of the pool, and then there's debris up there now, I'll reminisce the pool, it's up in this corner of the site.
Okay, can we turn that?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thanks.
Uh, this corner.
I thank you, Charles, appreciate that.
And we have another call, right?
Sure.
Um, so I know there's a lot of wildlife back there, is there anything that can be done, fully done, how's the wildlife? Because it's here.
We've seen it here, I have not seen any of the turvy yet, uh, we're there. We're hiding for a while. I haven't seen, I was surprised I haven't seen, um, it is, it looks like they're hiding here there, I don't know if that's, if anyone's going to.
Maybe there's some more pointy questions.
Sure.
So, we're not in, for major subdivision or site plan, you are going to have to provide, if you're successful, what you proceed with this development, against your environmental policies, and then by moment, like state insurance requirement of, of our ordinance, then they have to look at threatened dangerous species, uh, that would be the threshold here, or not threatened danger according to the state of New Jersey, not made in state of New Jersey, neither attorneys, but you would have to prove that this development would not have that nature intact in accordance with the state regulations for threatened danger species. And that would be a matter that's, uh, taken up at major subdivision or site plan, not so much for what, for the swingy, for the wasted, the B five density there. Whether it's, whether it's the, the five-point, uh, nine, unit per acre, or the three-inch acre, that would all have to be addressed at site.
Okay. Anybody else for, for?
Madam Chairman, I want to point out one thing, um, with regard to the members of the public, again, I was just talking about the deed tonight, and I can't stress this enough, that, that he said the board has, he said to grant something, we have to come back, as you talked to said, for the additional full approvals of site plan, and some of the, so, if someone has a question or concern regarding density, obviously, that's what we've been discussing, we just want to keep the record clear, and that, I understand that. Thank you.
So, in a moment, I want to open up the meeting to the public, and anyone wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only, will be asked to come up to the microphone and state your name and address, and we'll, uh, have a listen to what you have to say. Uh, first of all, I want to thank all of you for your patience, and I know it's hard to sit out there and not chatter amongst each other, we've been very respectful, except for a couple of outbursts, we've been very respectful to the client, to the board, and I, I appreciate that, I know it's hard to sit out there for close to two hours and, um, and just listen, so, so thank you for, number one, for attending, um, and, and number two, for being respectful, and I would hope that we can continue on the same path, where everyone can hear what everyone's saying, so, you know, we want to try to avoid any, any outbursts, we want to try to let everyone speak, we want to hear what you have to say, um, and totally, the, uh, this is a bifurcated application, which means legally, we cannot put on the record anything to do with the site plan aspect of the application type. All, all we can talk about on the record tonight, during the meeting, is the density portion of the application, okay, so that's, that's the only questions you're allowed to answer, I mean, ask, you have to answer them, the applicant has been gracious enough, I did ask them before the meeting, if they would entertain your questions off the record, uh, regarding things to do with site plan, you know, what color they want to be, how heavy they want to be, they didn't have to do that, they could have said no, we're here for density, and that's it, we're out of here. They're being gracious enough to, uh, entertain your, your questions out in the hallway after the meeting, but as a matter of legality, that cannot be here on the record, on the recording. So, I would ask that you please, um, keep that in mind when you come up to the podium and ask your questions, because I don't, I don't want to dismiss anyone, um, but legally, we cannot hear or answer any questions during site plan or a subdivision. So, with that, I'll make the motion to open the public portion of the meeting regarding this application only.
I'll make a motion.
Dennis? All the portion, though.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tony Trongo, Davis Room.
I'm sorry, say again, please.
Tony Trongo, Davis Room. Uh, about the impact and the change in use of variance from the fifty, fifty-five to a hundred and eight, uh, we didn't talk about the impact on schools, and so, I have a pretty good background knowledge on school finance, and so, right now, our running public schools, our tax bill, our local tax bill, uh, we are one million and fifty-nine thousand dollars over our local fair share, uh, so it's a million dollars that we pay more than we should have, should have, based on the school fund for you, okay? It's not, but my calculation is, it's a mistake. So, keep that million dollars in mind, that we, we pay more than we should, and then we look at the tax rate and the, uh, and if you look at the price per, for each home, and we hear the upper twos, we're looking at, at the two-point-one-oh-seven tax rate for schools, it'd be about fifty-four hundred dollars for each, each, each home for schools. And so, when you do the math, you're looking at a, a breaking point of about forty to fifty kids that this property would have, would, would have on it before we would start losing money on the property, okay? So, there has to be, what's the sweet spot on that, I know there's a Rucker study, and it's similar to the traffic study. I know there's a Rucker study, and it's similar to the traffic study. The Rucker study is based on, it's a meta, a meta study. It's not particular to Ruddy or, it's a meta study. And so it depends upon the demographics, you know, lower demographics, more kids, you know, if you have, you know, professionals, lower amount of kids. But we haven't talked about the impact on the school system. That's number one. Uh and then, uh, and then number two, is the impact on traffic. So we talked about, again, that, that overall traffic. When you look at the map and you see that the study's based on the site, not on the road. So if you, if you live in this area, Hartford, Hartford Drive has no sidewalks. And if you ever drove there on a daily basis, there's a lot of, we haven't talked about the next rail traffic. And so the impact of the density at that level, as they're walking upward, with the people walking through the metropolitan, uh market complex, nobody talked about that. So we have to address that also. It's very dangerous. It's dangerous now. And I know that's not there, not the original problem, it's our problem. I worry about that, it's like, if they walk into active, sort of bring higher level of density into that street, I worry about that. And uh that's all relative to, uh, areas. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Muster, so I follow, that's definitely someone else's, welcome. Uh David Raybo, so I live on Sherry Drive on the third, the down street from where. Now, the gentleman spoke about traffic survey, he spoke about a two-hour period within Eastham Road to the site spot, but it never mentioned the opposite direction going towards Davis and the upcoming roads that are there, like Sherrington, Sherry, Davis, and roads leading towards Triton Principal. The traffic there, even on a good day, because I bought my dog on it, people barely stop that traffic sign that's there on, uh, Sher, 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 Sher. Yeah, excuse me. Um, so what makes them think of that survey, does that put that into play? Because he's only talking about the two-hour period of peak hours. We need to hear an eight-hour overall work hours daily. Because if you multiply that sixty incidents within a two-hour period, that's a hundred and twenty incidents, you multiply that by six, a hundred and thirty-sixty incidents in a six-hour period. I don't know if, if we took that into consideration. Are we going to make that a left-only turn, where they go directly toward Eastham Road? Or we're going to just let it go right, where it's going to start interfering with the livelihood of people within that area, say Davis to Hartford and Hartford to Sherry and Sherrington or going all the way through? Because we already know, people are a little around you. Delivery dogs, we've got for a shortcut. We already tried to eliminate the best we can, and when it came to that, it's N P S and the long day charge. What guarantees, what plans do they have for future implementations as far as Triton? And if I may, because uh this was reported and something was mentioned, two hundred thousand miles per unit, a hundred and eighty units, that's twenty-one million dollars plus. How much of that twenty-one million is going to buy to running? Police, roads, school, green space, drag, drive, shit, drag. And if I see from this map here, there's only one in and out. It's a virtual trap. There's no emergency exit going towards Davis. How's a police officer supposed to go and do their job? Would they have to go all the way around? I mean, I know we were supposed to be speaking that city, but since it was recorded and you did bring it up first.
But just, just for occasion, you know.
Lewis Norwalk is going to be the, nor, nor, which is, is going to be the emergency egress and egress. Because the way the map looks here, there's only one in and out.
Right.
It does a cul-de-sac at the end and it's a virtual.
The cul-de-sac at the end has emergency access only for emergency vehicles, police, fire, ambulance, in case there's any blockages or the interior roadways.
Because the way the map looks here, it only, a foot, a foot trap. So it's only, is that a real foot trap?
Emergency access only. So the one way in and out is set by the, the state rules on how developments for residential have to be developed. This would comply with that, uh but that's more of a site plan issue. Uh in terms to, how much money comes back to the rung in terms of local taxes, the school taxes, that's the regular tax rate based on whatever the assessment of the, the properties are. That's, that's, that's outside of the board.
Twenty-one million dollars.
Yeah, that's outside of the boards. That's, the board really here is, has a judicial process for land use, not so much on the economic stuff. So I think you have to.
Oh, and you're right, because she did say that.
That's outside of our appropriate.
Since it wasn't recorded, question, he brought it up first.
Yeah, there is, there is, is part of the application material. I have it with me right now, the actual whole, uh, traffic report that was presented by Schropshire. So typically, traffic testimony and traffic reports, they talk about the peak hours, because that has the most impact. Inside of this report is an analysis of all the traffic that would be generated and also analysis of all the adjacent traffic from the most, uh, from the points most local to the development. Uh so the testimony was just partial, contained of what's already in the report. So they do, they do have, they do have a much more expanded analysis, but that was the testimony on the peak traffic events that will be experienced based on the projections of the happens traffic.
Um, I don't know if the data, if he might have used to come up with these discretionary answers, but once the last time that data of the, for, the way it's been developed now.
And the only, the only thing I could say that is the industry, traffic engineers is nationally recognized and has been recognized in many of its values, including its values I represent, as, as the data set that Paul Driver announced, this road running land use boards in the state of New Jersey, at least my experience, uh, it's, it's updated annually, I believe.
Semi-annually, the last update was the fall of two thousand.
So twice a year?
No, I'm sorry, no, I meant, um.
Every two years?
Every few years, it depends, it varies, there's no sense.
So it's, it's not, it's not a static thing, so I, I would, I would agree to that, it's probably every two years or so.
The last update was the fall of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So when you, the testing was done, did you use a test and control style group? Or did you just do it statistically by what you counted? Please.
I just wanted to make sure everyone can hear you while you're answering as well. Just to answer your question, when we do our traffic counts, we actually have people typically sit at the intersections and count the vehicles with a mechanical board for those periods of the establishment. So it's two hours in the morning and four hours at the end of the day, physically sat there and counting who goes ahead.
Thank you, board.
Good evening.
How you doing? Good evening.
Doing ninety-nine, nine, E C, Timbuk.
Talked about the traffic. All right, so the traffic study that you guys did was on, you, the traffic study you guys did was on Hartford and Davis, correct? Hartford being here to Davis and then here to Eastham, right?
So we counted the intersection of Hartford and Eastham, Hartford and Sheffield Court, and Hartford and Davis.
And Davis, all right. So what, a lot of problems you have is, down here, I live at nine oh nine, I'm the furthest house from Eastham Road, the last house on the left before you go into Magnolia. I can't get out of my driveway at four o'clock to even make a right to head out to Eastham, the traffic is rundown so far. Not to mention, that roadway on Eastham is so bad and the traffic that's going to affect the infrastructure on that road. So not only does it affect it here, but it affects it way up at the Black Horse Pike, because even if that light is green at the Black Horse Pike, you have to slow down because it's nothing but pothole city that you can't even make the light. So it affects the traffic, seriously, because you cannot make, even if you can make the light there, you have to slow down to like twenty miles an hour, not your wheels are going to ship them. My girl's car is, the anti-lock brakes go on when you hit the brakes. That's how bad it is up there at that, at that intersection. So not only will it affect it here and at Triton, it will affect it all the way up by the school and where the, the crosswalk is. So that traffic runs so far back and now, not to mention visitors, mail, trash, like the other guy said. If you come down Davis Road and you go to Sharif and you go up to Clemmidge Bridge Road, if somebody is making a left there and all this flow of a hundred and six houses without visitors are leaving and exited that way off Sharif, and someone's making a left on the Clemmidge Bridge, you'll never get out to make a right. That'll be, like, someone's going to go through where FedEx is, the FedEx talks in order, you're not going to get out that way neither. But that affects, that, I'm trying, I can't even get out of my driveway. So to say that's going to be one percent traffic increase, a, a fifth grader could tell you that that's, that's going to be false.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Yep.
And Madam, I don't want to, we'll grab anyone's additional testimony, but really want to try to stay focused on the density and obviously, you will be down, just like that. And I know people are emotional.
Well, what, what I was saying, Joe, that they, that, that the traffic study is, is part of the density, they, you know, I don't want to poo-poo anymore, they came out here, they took their time, they came out here and they're saying.
Understood, that's just, we're actually, yes, that, the, the study was a legitimate study.
I, I totally, I totally agree, Karen.
I, I understand, but Jim, Jim, this study is a legitimate study, but you don't live back there.
That's right.
It's going, there's no way seventy-five percent of the traffic is going to go to Eastham, because according to twenty-five, they can't type, or Davis Road without that.
And we certainly understand that, but there's no data that contradicts what our experts have said, other than there's some idea of what could happen.
That is, they can hate for. Oh, that's, 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 that's be, that's be respectful of, you know, these, these folks, how the professionals here, um, they did their diligence. The only thing that we can really go by, in my opinion, and Mr. Bock, if you're correct me wrong, the only thing we can really go by is what is in the study and what was, and what was found, um, with the actual numbers. I don't know how we can speculate.
Well, you, I mean, we're absolutely complying with our own personal appearances and personal, absolutely. Uh, the study has been presented, it does follow the protocol that would be expected by our ordinance, uh, and it, 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 it does follow general standard practice for the traffic agent. Again, the.
Quickly, there's no study done on Sherrington and a lot of us that live there.
We're going to wait, because if, if you're not on the record and not in the microphone, you're not going to be part of the recording, which is very important for everybody. So with, with that, I, I think if someone has confidence about traffic, I think we have to live and speak to that. We will do our best to defer any site plan issues, subdivision issues, that's understood. So, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Yes, me, come on, man.
Can we, you guys.
All right, uh, Sherrington Lane. Okay, traffic study. Let's get back to here. This is the road coming out of the apartments, right? Now you come out and you go down to Eastham, real, sounds real nice, but here's what Sherrington's got to deal with. Nobody did a study of all the people that have got to come from the other side of town and come through Sherrington to go to the apartments, go to Acme, shop and everything. Right here, when you come out of Sherrington, you make a right, then you got one street, two street, that's three streets. Now you got the, people come out of the townhouses, people come out of this apartment, their main route to come out of the apartment, that's five in the cluster. When you make a right, there's a stop sign here, a stop sign, they don't even stop for that stop sign. The town has done everything they could to slow things down. This cluster's got to be taken care of. Could help it if you run it over to here. Mine notice town, there's houses, but if this road would come out and go into the Acme lot instead of these poor people on the Shubert Court, this poor fellow that lives on the corner here, he's been fighting, we've been fighting traffic forever. When I first moved in the house, I live right on a curve, I got a big house, nice house. As a matter of fact, I built my daughter's house. I'm a, what's that? Uh, nice guy. Okay. Then you got, come here, when they take that turn, they zoom. One night when I first moved in, I had my truck out and, you know, I'm in, you know, kid come down there, they had lifted my truck up to take his car out. That's how fast they go on Sherrington Lane.
I can't hear you, did you turn on the microphone?
Oh, yeah. He's a problem. But what I'm saying is, we need to get Sherrington, uh, Sherrington Lane straightened out. The people here on these corner houses need your help. They're, they're the ones that are going to suffer from this. And then back here, the wildlife, you guys got to take care of that. Whatever you've got to, they, some of you said there's a bald eagle back there, so watch it out. All right, but this is my concern here, this cluster, traffic here. Nobody did a study with it. You've got all these lanes coming into it, you don't realize they come out of the apartment, every one of them's got a name. That's a short street, but this, when you make a right, our lives are in our hands. If you're going to have another, these people are going to want to get to work, so they, they're not going to stop. Hey, George, just like that, yeah, we, we really have to, they, they can only, they can only speak on their property. They can't speak to, um, you know, the gentleman, Mr. Zetti, talking about Eastham Road being both. Oh, yeah, well, I'm not worried about it, but this, the face right here coming out is the next. And that's what everybody's got. But what I'm saying is, we're getting, we're getting way off the topic here. Okay, I'm going to be melonious. But I just wanted to quite understand, we, we wanted, we want to hear you regarding the density. Um, I have public safety here, um, I asked the chief police to come here, um, so he's hearing what you have to say. Right, we're going to have a lot more traffic on that road. We have problems now that are really bad. That's why Chief Sam Polk is here, but that has nothing to do with what they have control over. They can only control their. Well, I was suggesting that they, they come out, does it respond? Okay? Yeah, I mean, no problem. Thanks, George.
Hey, Murray, two eighty-one, I'm Green Road. I'm here as a resident, I'm a police officer, also a school group member, but I'm here as a resident. Came here with open mind, I like this diagram, I like the book, it's going to have really zero impact on me personally and my property. Um, but I came here with open mind and then I started hearing some people talk and I had to wait until I heard. So just for you guys as group members, you have to realize, two hundred and sixty cars is going to impact the traffic. Okay? The density in there is not the same as the density in Sherrit. That's what we heard tonight, not the same. People are going to leave these places from the upper two hundred thousand to buy single family homes and run weed, which you can buy for less than that nap. So why would you start out at a higher cost? Um, and as far as like where the water comes from, the water comes off the streets, there's no infrastructure. I know that's not their problem, but you guys represent the town and represent us, there's no infrastructure. The water is running off of my street and it owes the bus, that's why it owes. There's no curbs, there's no gutters, no silver, uh, there's nothing. So it's going negatively impact all, in my opinion. So I don't want to go into too deep, I just wanted to talk about what I heard tonight, because I don't agree, so. I'm going to go next.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mike Siega, living in twenty-one, E C, Timbuk. Uh, just a quick question regarding the, uh, traffic survey. So you said that the last one that was done was back in, uh, the fall of twenty twenty-one, is that right? As far as the October, okay. So the, do we know when the one before that was? Or was, or is this just the only one that was done? Is there anything on record from, to your point, pre-COVID times? So that we can have a better understanding of what the real number would be for when we come back to. Yeah, I know, I know you had made mention that, yes, kids are going back to school, but as far as the adults are concerned, people are just now starting to get back to work. So that, that is a pretty big concern. If you're looking at numbers from the fall of twenty twenty-one, COVID was still pretty big, you know, no matter what you say, it's definitely worse than it is now. So I'd just like to see a comparison of what twenty nineteen would look like, or twenty seventeen or twenty fourteen, when the original, uh, when the original project came, just to see what this on the, maybe in comparison to.
Patrick Smoseley can get with you outside afterward and give you his card, perhaps he can help you out with that. I don't have that on disposal right now, is that, Mr. Smoseley?
Is that something that's been?
I think we need to say in terms of, the projections are based on I T E data, which is multi-years. Well, the majority of the data in the, in, in, through the traffic years is pre-COVID. It generates what the projected volumes would be for the, the townhouse unit, unit. Now, in terms of the roadway counts, um, I could ask, Mr. Smoseley, uh, is it fair to say, maybe the roadway counts could be slightly higher, uh, but that would make actually the effect of this development lesser on the overall? And maybe, maybe you can come up here and talk about that. And maybe, maybe you can come up here and talk about that.
Yeah, so, I just wanna clarify one thing you were saying, so we were talking about two different things. The traffic counts that we did for our study were from October of 2021. We were also talking about the trip generation rates that we used, which are from ITE. The latest update to those was in the fall of 2021, and those are updated every several years. So that, those are two separate things. We're talking about the traffic counts we did versus the trip rates we developed. Uh, but that being said, we can look back at some historical count data for this area and see how it compared to the 2021 volume numbers. Uh, but again, if the volumes were higher, uh, unless they were significantly, you know, changed compared to what we collected, you know, the analysis shows that there's still capacity on the roadway to accommodate higher volumes. Uh, and again, that would still just, you know, further reduce our percentage impact, our contribution for the future conditions, if, if the baseline volumes were increased compared to what we can. But, we can certainly, you know, if that's a request under the site plan application, we could, you know, provide some additional analysis comparing, you know, what we cut in 2021 versus any historical data.
And I, I believe, uh, you have in your office, if not, we could provide it to you again, the 2014 traffic report. So you can have that, and we'll have the camp data for that. Again, that's more a matter of design and site plan, when they come in, and how things will be signed and things like that. That's really going forward, but.
I, and I, I apologize, I'm.
Yeah, but we could, we could actually bring that 2014 traffic count data, and at least make it available for the outing forward and.
My, yeah, my thought process was that, you know, if you're taking, you know, COVID times, and that's the only data that you have, then it would be interesting to see what it would be like if you had.
That's a good point.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Five, Aaron, 21, Kimberley Drive. Um, my concern is from one, uh, gentleman that I mentioned, there's no sidewalks.
Yep.
Yeah, and one in this room has children, or had, had young children at one time, going to school, were always worried about their kids walking on that, on that road. That's still a big concern. Now, I'm sure there'll be children just about that. But I don't see, that, that raises, I'm gonna accommodate something like this. I have a lot of, I mean, what, let's go down paper, is it necessarily, uh, what's, what's the realistic one? So, um, I think 108 units here is, it's totally on that list for the, for the area. Um, not going into the whole wildlife area thing, and I know we're not gonna discuss all of them tonight, but, um, the concern is, uh, now, I live on Kimberley Drive, that's the townhouse development you're talking about. 24 homes, each home has at least two to three cars. So we're not talking about 108 cars, we're talking maybe two, 250 cars coming in and out of that development. And that's a fact. Especially if it's a three-bedroom townhouse with a garage, you're gonna have families that are going to definitely have two to, you know, three cars. So that's a lot of traffic coming in and out of that roadway. So, again, I think that, that amount of townhouses in that area is way, is way too much.
The application, the application to sphere application allows for 2.4 per town unit.
Well, I live up.
And then, and then.
Okay, I, and I agree.
I'll try to answer your question, man, for, and then 0.3, uh, per town unit for open. So you're aware.
I'm aware of that. But again, I live on Kimberley Drive, and I know for a fact that, um, we always have problem parking. So I can guarantee you that there'd be a problem there, especially with 108 townhouses. So, I just wanted to say that, again, and as far as the traffic flicker test, can we ask for another one? I mean, just someone sitting there clicking, how accurate really is that? Or depending on a human being to collect cars, so. I would say that we.
Sure we can't ask for another one to, um, for this hearing.
Okay.
I'm saying, we have a hearing, so we can't, we can't ask for another one, it would be redundant, they.
Well, I think another possibly independent study from other than the developer. That's what I'm, could be a possibility.
For the purpose of this hearing, so we could have that. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Welcome. Hi.
My name's James Paulson, I live on Davis Road, and, uh, my house of bucks, um, where there's.
Will you go ahead and feed?
Paulson, Mr.? Paulson, C.O.? C.O., I'm sorry, is it sir? Long, I just wanted to, you know, I had a couple of points written down. I've, uh, thought that, you know, the plan to have so many more houses would adversely affect, you know, the current president, because we're the ones that are gonna be impacted, not anybody else. And the reason why they're doing it, as, you know, was previously stated, was to maximize profits. Um, but also, uh, wanted to mention, uh, that was already mentioned today about school overcrowding, uh, some of those points that have already been discussed. I just wanted to go on record and say I think it's excessive, and it's just something more dense to an already dense area. Um, as they were saying, with, uh, the apartments over there, uh, in addition to the traffic on East Shire.
Thank you. Thank you, James.
Evening, hi, my name is Chris Demey, I live on Calhoun, on the corner of Calhoun and Davis. And my concerns are pretty much the same as everybody else's. The area just simply can't handle any more traffic. Uh, you got a police source that has a tremendous job to try and control the traffic on Davis Road. Uh, Chief Sam Polsky's out there himself all the time, and they still cannot control the traffic. And I think the traffic is a key issue here. Um, people race up and down Davis Road all the time. Hard to believe that only 25% of these people are gonna come down, hard for to go down Davis. Because Davis is the main customer, it gets a good drive, it's a white wood bike, that's how a lot of people know. And, and if I can go off the record, or just change the subject, there's nothing to do with this. I think that's what happened.
You know, again, this is, this, public portion for this application, and I apologize. There won't be a public portion for anything else after we either grant them the approval or deny it. We can come back up, sir. Okay, you're welcome, Chris, thank you.
I, did we get an estimate, Jenny Brown, in that address?
Jenny Brown, Sherrington Lane. Did we get an estimate number of children that would enter the school system through this development? You don't know that? I just wanted to point out that these children would go to Downing School, which is already 100 years old, and it is in the middle of a neighborhood where adding on to the school is not possible because of its location. Um, the children in the preschool would go to Volt, which has a waiting list right now for the preschool. Um, and these children would live more than two miles from Volt School, which would require a bus to take them there. Because I live on Sherrington, which is 1.9, two miles from the school, I do not get a bus. But children who live in the apartments right down the road from me do get a bus. So these children will all require busing to Volt School for six years of their education. Um, I'm just concerned about the, the impact, because our school buildings are very old. They've already moved, um, the offices out of Volt to fit the preschool in there, and so it's already packed. That's just a concern, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Uh, make a note, and then put it in the other person's.
Okay, I have a motion for a request of $32, second, second, I wish God, all in favor? And I am good. Okay, so unfortunately, the meeting is closed at this point in time. Um, okay.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, look, I certainly respect what the residents have to say. But the traffic numbers are, the traffic, and I know everyone has their opinion that we didn't take into account this and that. Never say, but Mr. Smosey's study, it's a study. I lived there, I've never had, commented, but to make an assumption that's not in the actual study, I think would be, be correct. The numbers you have recorded show that the traffic is, is required. I don't know what the conditions like, every single way, and everything like that. But Mr. Smosey does, and those are the numbers that we're working with. I'm just asking that actual study here, the way that it should be given, and you can't say that. We vigilance and dose of traffic problems, where people are writing stop signs off-site, or they're speeding off-site. Or, one gentleman had a great point, that the road has potholes, man. It's just not relevant to our citizens.
I know, I, I just, I just.
And we respect all their opinions, I wanna minimize what I would have to say. It might seem like that, that we're saying what you're saying is not as important. But to our side alone, the study that Mr. Smosey did seems to be what we're guiding.
I could put my.
And with regard to the, um, other comments, again, they're well taken, but some of them were more for stuff of the site plan. We really just wanna focus on the density alone. And I think we've gotten a fair amount of expert testimony that the site can accommodate the density. As far as off-site traffic, off-site issues regarding school, with all due respect, again, that's more probably for the governing body, not even the board, to talk about taxes and other issues that come up that are outside of the local plate. So just wanna make sure that we're focused correctly.
We, we, we as a board understand that, understand me, these are the people that live in this town.
And they spend a lot of time visiting.
I'm here, I'm, I'm here as a volunteer, I don't get paid, I've been here for decades, not here a decade, okay? So, when residents come out and they spend two and a half hours of the time and they wanna have a couple of statements, I'm, I'm here just to say, and, and trust me, I know how much weight to put on to what they're saying. These folks have been up here a long time, they know the difference between your density application and rhetoric about potholes. These folks, I, I, I hours, and I respect them sitting here for two and a half hours. So, we, we will put the proper weight to your density application if it deserves it, but we, we want it to grow our time.
I'm not sure if the board has those questions based on how the public board.
Well, I actually think this is to say, but, you know, it's not based on that, so I have to think someone for.
So we'll answer whatever questions are, are permanent now, and, uh, here's the remainder of the questions.
Thank you. Okay, well, um, I'll, uh, I guess I'll start. Um, I appreciate, again, everybody coming out, and, uh, again, I've been doing this a long time. I was here for the last, uh, application for this property. And, um, I speak for myself, not for any, by, well, I'm speaking for myself. Um, there were some reasons why we, uh, went back and revisited, uh, what our ordinance was, and the reason why we reduced it to three per acre instead of, um, what they asked for before, is because we wanted the ability to control the application that came in front of us. Uh, that being said, um, three, frankly, in, in today's world is not a realistic number, in my opinion. Again, it's just meatball, not whole pork, it's meatball. Okay, so, for a prop, for a property owner to go three per acre is not really realistic in, in today's economic world. And, um, it's, it's understandable that they would wanna maximize, they are private property owners. This isn't open space where they have to, you know, say that we have to allow them to do this or the other. This is a matter of math, it's a matter of math, okay? And, um, we have to base, I have to base my decision on what I, what math I think is gonna work for the acres that we're dealing with. Um, and it's also gonna be predicated on neighborhoods. Um, I was out there for, um, an hour, hour and a half, like, and I mean, just, uh, well, I've been in this town for four years. I, I don't take my position lightly. Um, and that being said, I'm not comfortable with 108 units. Uh, I think more, this, my opinion only. Um, I think a more palatable, uh, number would be, uh, five units per acre, that would allow for more open space. It would reduce the, uh, number of cars, it would reduce the number of residents, it would reduce the traffic. But I think it would still be palpable for you folks to, um, be able to, uh, make, make the best of your property. Um, that would be 91 units, um, 92, it's 91.5, so rounded up, you know, a couple of the houses in half, and it's 91.5. But, I mean, I think, you know, we, we started out at three, just because we realized back in 2014 that that application was just an absolute saturation of that, of that property. And we weren't comfortable with it then, and I'm not comfortable with it now. Um, so, I mean, I think, uh, we have to have a, a good common ground. You have every right to develop your property. I have looked at your, um, your, your basic, uh, density studies, I've looked at the, uh, the sites, as far as the, um, reviews, I've walked the site, I've gone through the traffic study, I've gone through what engineering cap provided. And, um, I think we need to come to a happy medium. Um, I don't think three's fair, and I don't agree with 108. So, again, that's just me, um, but that's kind of where I'm at with it. Uh, I think we need to have a little bit less density than what, what, what I always wanna apply. We're gonna try to keep this, you know, where it's managed. And I'm sure, uh, public safety, you know, the police department, you know, all those folks, um, heard about, you know, um, extra cars. No, no, that, it's, it's, you can't control, you folks can't control if people go too fast, they go too fast now. You guys can't control, I've been sidewalked there for 100 years. I worry about, you know, the kids that walk, that walk out through Hunter Park right now. I worry about them now. I, I, I went back, um, and I busted knuckles with TSG to get that sidewalk put in on East Shamrood. I, I, I walked that, and we got back. We can't, you folks, you know, these folks can't be, you know, expected to put a sidewalk, it's not the, it's not the definition. Yesterday.
No, I was just saying, I couldn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, I worry, I worry about all the kids, and I know this is my attitude to kids, but it doesn't make these kids different than the kids from Hunter Park. And that's not something that we can put on these folks. I think what we can do is try to make it more palatable at 91 or 92 units. You know, that's just my opinion, man.
Thank you for giving us the time to present the, the special way you created the name.
Of course, thank you.
Any other members wanna make a comment, okay?
My question is, for the road, roadway that you guys come in on, those two clusters of units, how many do we have? 12?
Immediately upon making the right.
Yeah.
There's 12, there's 12. Two goings of six, total of 12.
Yeah, so, my thought was, some similar candy, but I, I have written down there 96 units, and you do a way with those two. I don't like all that, I mean, people, and some of the residents made it, and I live there, and again, I wasn't noticed, but I just think if they're going, there's a, there's a substantial amount of open space there before we get to seeing a lot of that townhome area. My opinion.
Everybody's opinion's important, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Do you consider allowing your number?
Maybe take just a quick second to talk.
Of course.
Some of your talking.
One, one, one is, especially this, you guys have been sitting here for two and a half hours for, to get a tenant a permit so that you can use the facilities around that door, so that. Hi, I'm, I'm all right back here. We're having a meeting, uh, back in session at 9:40. So we have a couple of things on the.
And just for the record, all the members have returned, and all the professionals have returned.
So we have a couple of things on the, on the, uh, talk we did and we discussed, um, you know, and the applicant went out to, uh, to far with it, I mean, to far with his, uh, done, so, uh, what were your thoughts?
Before getting to that, I just wanna say, during the break, a couple of people who came and spoke, came up and gave us some good input, were extremely respectful, maybe clarified their comments a little bit, and they're not anti-developing, they're pro-safety for everything else, so that was very nice. So thank you to the gentleman who we spoke with, so I appreciate that, sir. Sir, thank you. Uh, but, uh, our applicant having discussed this, taking into account the, um, request, the buildings that are directly into the, uh, I don't know where you're coming from, the right or the left, buildings 814 and 813, always respectfully being eliminated to amend the application to add 96 units. Those two buildings would become. Those two buildings would be gone. There might be some that, and Steve talked about this, we need to do a drainage, maybe somewhere else. But effectively, it would eliminate those two buildings in their entirety. And that would be 12 units less, as proposed, so 96, and then I would have green space or something else. It'd be, it'd be in there.
Just so you know, it might, it might be one of the form of equality gains. We don't know, because it's not a site plan. For overall, I believe what I'm hearing is it'll be 96 total units. And the density of the units will, would be to the rear of the site. So those two units in their concept plans that they rely on on their applications would be eliminated.
And I guess the parking across would, you wouldn't keep that?
I think you're leaving that now, please.
Yeah, be eliminated.
Senator, you're revenging your application requesting a density of 96 units at the site?
That's correct. I don't know if that comes out of the paper.
No. Whatever matters.
Five point nine six.
Five point one.
That elimination.
Are there any other comments from the board regarding the reductions? I, I said 91.5, frankly, looking at the, looking at the aerial view and the elimination of those two units, I think it does make for a nice entryway and a nice area of open space that we're going to have the residents get back. I think it also helps out the slight triangle of the exiting and entering the facility. So I'm okay with 96 units versus the 91. Ninety-two, geez, you're practically 91. Well, I'm, I'm quite personally okay with 96.
Yeah, I just, just so, I don't know if it's my place to say this here, or maybe it's Dave or Candy or Steve, but people got to understand, and maybe they do, maybe they don't, but this is only the first step. It doesn't mean if we approve this tonight, they can start putting, you know, concrete slabs and start building. There's so much more that has to go through.
It's like playing a major game.
I'd have to say.
All you're agreeing tonight is that you're agreeing, if you do approve it, that the developer may put 96 townhouse units.
Subject to everything else.
Subject to subdivision and subject to any other approvals, and any, any other bulk variances that may be requested. And this, this approval would also be, I think, conditioned that there would be a conversion of each restriction that any townhouse that has a garage cannot be converted into living space.
And I think it'd be key, if we could, if there's no objection, that you actually put it in there that the building 814 and 813 would be eliminated, that there would be no building in that area as indicated.
No, living space, no.
No, no, no units in that area.
Yeah, we don't know if we're going to go to.
Right, you might have to do some other infrastructure guidance understood, but there'd be no, no townhouse unit. In the area that's represented where currently 814 and 813 are. That's the best way to say.
814 and 813.
And I think that gets the point across that.
That's going to be vague.
That, that is going to, that's going to be without housing. So with those players, Dave, Matt and Chair, I think we'll sort of.
814, Mr. Rowan?
Chairman, members, as always, you're an initial trier of fact. You hear the evidence, you weigh the evidence, you hear our residents, you hear their arguments, and you hear their concerns. Under this type of variance, I concur with the council's advice and the, and Tiffany, that the proofs that you have to, that applicant has to accomplish in a D5 type of variance was set forth in two central cases. One was the Grubbs versus Slade Howard matter, and the Coventry Square versus Westwood Board of Adjustment Act. They kind of set the law and the guidelines of what planning boards have to do, what they have to look for. So unlike the harsher criteria set down in the Dichi, what the board has to be, when they're dealing with a density use variance, you have to determine whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed higher density. So what you have to look at is, number one, traffic. If you're satisfied with the traffic expert and the testimonies he's given, you have to take that into consideration. You have to take into consideration, as set forth in Steve's letter, review letter dated March 18, 2022, the zoning requirements and the standards regarding townhouse development, which it appears this applicant meets or exceeds. That you can take into consideration. So you also have to take into consideration, is there a negative impact on our zoning ordinance? You've heard Ms. Tiffany Morrissey make her argument of why she does not believe that. You can either accept that argument, or if based on other credible facts or evidence, you can reject that argument. If you find that there is no significant impact, and if you find that the, the, the nature of this site will accommodate and allow the construction of 96 townhouse units, and considering our zoning ordinance and the purposes which were very carefully set forth by Ms. Morrissey in her testimony of what our, our intent was with townhouse and cluster townhouse development, you can consider all those, and if you feel that it's favorable, you could consider approving this application. If you feel that there's a negative impact, that's significant, and significantly would harm the public, or once again significantly, that impact our zoning ordinance and what our intent was in this particular section, you could, you could decide in favor. So there are the balances that you have to weigh to see. Once again, you've heard the testimony, it appeared to be credible, but you folks have to make that change. That's something for you. You are acting as the trier of fact. Steve and I can guide you of what our ordinance says, of what case board says, but you've got to fit everything together in order to make your decision. And you have to consider our residents, what their concerns were. Now, it appears that there was a compromise, you can take that into consideration too, between the applicant, between what the board determines to be a fair resolution of this matter. With that said, the, your motion would be made to approve a density, a, a, a variance, a D5 variance to permit 96 townhomes on block, block 149, block, what was that, block 1, on the condition that no, that there would be a D restriction saying that there is no, no possibility of a conversion of the garages being turned into living space, and also a condition that there will be no building units on what's been designated as 814 and 813, I believe on exhibit A, if you can help me with this.
Exhibit A4.
A4, okay. Of course, this, this is conditioned upon a major site plan and subdivision being approved at a later date, which then other items regarding design, whatever waivers or whatever, whatever bulk variance is made be requested. And once again, the public would have their input, and it would be subject to a later date letter review for final.
Is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the D5 variance consisting of 96 units total, with the D restriction implemented, and also the parking removed from across these 814 and 813. Anything else I need to say on that?
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're both all pleased with this.
I want to, I want to vote yes, and I want to vote yes because I think it's a good, it's a good plan. You know, we haven't gone through the site plan. I think the 96 units will fit nicely. I did consider the schools, you know, going through all three schools. From 2017 to 2022, the enrollment has dropped from 859 for all three schools to 809. So we are actually down in our enrollments in our three schools. So I think our schools will be able to accommodate a few more young folks. And these are not, Rowan, these numbers, these are the actual enrollment numbers. These are, these are true numbers, okay? They're not made up numbers, they're not assumptions. Our residencies have dropped from 800 to slightly north of 8450, over the past few years. So I believe adding some more folks to the roads is, is, you know, obviously would have impacted to a point. It would be possible for it not to impact it to a point. I have spoken to Chief Sampolsky, and I have gotten his, his input on this, and he believes that it would be able to be managed without a problem. He's, he's in charge of that, and he's charged with public safety. So he is ready to make any appropriate actions or adjustments in his police force, be it more patrol cars there in the peak hours, be it, you know, we talked about perhaps putting a speed limit sign there that says, "Speed limit 25, your, your speed, you know, 35", make the folks slow down. Again, that doesn't fall on the applicant, that falls on public safety. But all these things have influenced my decision, as, as well as, you know, I think it's, it's a nice, again, it's more a site plan, it's a nice, it's a, it's a nice townhome. I think we definitely have to allow this applicant to build on their property, and I appreciate them working with us in the reduction of units. And I think the elimination of 813 and 814 will also add to the open space perspective for the adjacent residents to the property. So I'm voting in the affirmative.
Ms. Ushin? Okay. Everything that I've seen so far, it looks like a good plan. I, I just have a problem with the density. And I can't get past the fact that what's allowable and what we're going to allow is pretty much choices much. I'm willing to reconsider numbers, but having, going back to what we originally did with this, this section that was available, this is the last available area in our town. We just don't have it. You know, we've got that moon spot all of the, the creek, but that's not going to be it. So I just feel like a 12% reduction in what you proposed originally, I'm just not there yet. I'm just not there yet. So I'm going to say no. Mr. Val.
Yes.
Mr. Roseau?
Hearing all the testimony, hearing the ordinance as well, the master plan, hearing what was previously handled, the reduction and so forth. Hearing all the concerns, definitely weighing the concerns and so forth, but knowing the future steps. I am going to move forward with the, with the yes.
Mr. Walker?
I appreciate you guys reducing your number. Stated numerous times, I didn't believe the traffic report. It's a better plan than we have with the Silo's plan. I think we have no choice other than to vote yes.
After hearing the testimony, I do appreciate you reducing the number of units, also understanding the economics of the situation, and how developers have to develop, and you're entitled to develop all your land that you own. And after hearing all, everybody's concerns and weighing everything, I do also vote yes.
And Ms.? I'd vote yes. Yeah, I think it's definitely a really good option.
Congratulations, that's, that's big, late site plan for us. Everybody's going to come back.
We'll be back soon.
Everybody, everybody, we're always going to come back, and then we're going to hold the people to the fire, and then they get dead, so it's all possible.
Absolutely.
Very much.
Okay, very much. I want to, I want to go further. At this point in time, the chosen welfare, if you want to open up the meeting to the public, anyone who wishes to share their headshot or whatever, and I think we're. Which is our office, my institution, all in favor? All right, so we're at 9:30. Thank you, everyone.